All right. Good morning and welcome to the Board of County Commissioners Board Meeting for April 4th, 2023. Can we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Barnett. Commissioner Baxter. Commissioner Bernard.
Here.
Commissioner Moreno.
Here.
Vice Mayor Sacks.
Here.
Mayor Weiss.
Here.
Commissioner Woodward.
Here.
Thank you.
All righty, and Commissioner Bernard, if you can lead us in the invocation and pledge allegiance, if you're able to, please rise.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. We ask you, God, to bless this meeting of people who earnestly desire to do their work in their best possible way to benefit those we serve and to leave to our children a better world. Please give us the wisdom and vision to plan adequately and act correctly to achieve these ends. Amen.
Amen. Thank you very much. Commissioner Moreno, your light is lit. Do you have...
I'm sorry.
Okay. All right. Moving on, do we have any additions, deletions, or substitutions to our agenda this morning?
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the board. On page forty, four G has been deleted. Item also on the same page, we've added four G, which is an add-on certificate of recognition honoring Grantley Colehurst as Pole Worker of the Year. And also on page forty, we are deleting item four I. It is also being changed from District Five to District Four, and Commissioner Woodward will be bringing it up under her comments for approval for an off-site proclamation. And that concludes our add and delete.
Okay, thank you very much. With that, do we have a motion to adopt the agenda as amended? Okay, good morning, everybody. Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Moreno, a second by Commissioner Woodward, all in favor, all opposed. That motion carries seven to zero. Thank you very much. Moving on to the consent agenda, would any commissioner like to remove any items from today's consent agenda? Not seeing any? Okay, with that, would somebody like to make a motion?
Some of them.
We have a motion by Commissioner Moreno, a second by the Vice Mayor, all in favor, all opposed. The consent agenda is approved unanimously. Okay, moving on to special presentations. Just reminding folks, first off, it's delightful to have everybody here with us today, and it's an honor to recognize all the wonderful things that are happening in the county. But we do have a very full special presentations today, so if we can make our comments brief under three minutes, much appreciated. But again, really look forward to hearing these wonderful proclamations and acknowledgements of the great work going on in our county. Commissioner Baxter, you're recognized.
I just wanted to update the record that I am here. Forgive me for being late.
Thank you very much. All right. Okay, so let us get started. And who leads us off this morning? Vice Mayor leads us off? You want to be second?
I'll go first. Would Linda Rigger, please come forward? Good morning. This proclamation declaring April twenty-three, two thousand twenty-three as Coach Marty Rigger Day. Whereas the Jewish Sports Heritage Association is a not-for-profit educational organization whose mission is to educate the public about the role Jewish men and women have played and continue to play in the world of sports and area of Jewish accomplishments often overlooked. And whereas as part of the mission, each year, the association conducts an induction ceremony. At the April twenty-three, two thousand twenty-three ceremony, outstanding Jewish Coach of the Year, Marty Rigger, will be inducted in honoring, in honor of his passing last year. And whereas Matty Rigger was a basketball coach and longtime resident of Comac, New York, and retired to the city of Delray Beach. And whereas his many accomplishments include being selected as League One Coach of the Year six times, and Suffolk County Large School Coach of the Year three times. And whereas Coach Rigger received numerous coaching awards and is a member of the Jewish Sports Heritage Association and Brentwood High School Basketball Hall of Fame. And whereas, under his leadership, his teams won the Suffolk County Championship three times and were among the final four teams eight times. And whereas his athletes has also won three medals, two silver and one bronze, in the Empire State Games, six medals in the Maccabi Games, four gold, one silver, and one bronze, and they qualified for the Suffolk County playoffs twenty-five times. And whereas the Jewish Sports Heritage Association, Marty Rigger Outstanding Jewish Coach of the Year Award will be presented annually in memory of coaching great Marty Rigger. And the inaugural recipient will be Coach Elliott Steinmetz of the Yeshiva University's Men's Varsity Basketball Team. And whereas Coach Rigger led an exemplary life of service and was a positive and uplifting influence on all who knew him. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Palm Beach County, Florida, assembled in regular session this fourth day of April twenty-two, twenty-two-three, that April twenty-three, two thousand twenty-three in Palm Beach County is hereby proclaimed Coach Marty Rigger Day. Congratulations. And Linda will accept this award on his behalf.
Well, on behalf of my family, I'm a little nervous. I want to accept this award and thank Palm Beach County for it. What you read is true, but he was also a great mentor and friend to everybody who knew him, his fellow coaches, his teams, his students, and he was just a special person, and I want to thank you.
Would team members of the Environmental Resources Management Team please come forward? Members from the Environmental CDT and local environmental groups that are present? This proclamation declaring April twenty-second, two thousand twenty-three as Earth Day. Whereas this year marks the fifty-third anniversary of Earth Day, a national day to focus on the environment and which is credited with launching the modern environmental movement. Whereas events over the past few years have taught us how critical the environment is for both mental and physical health. And whereas citizens of Palm Beach County have been champions of county efforts to address environmental issues such as the continuing restoration and enhancement of natural areas, the wild and scenic Loxahatchee River, parks, beaches, the Lake Worth Lagoon, estuary, and sea turtle and manatee protection. And whereas the county is working to mitigate its climate change impact by monitoring and reducing county greenhouse gas emissions, planning for climate resiliency, and promoting sustainable development. And whereas the results of restoration efforts are being realized through the return of rare bird species to the Lake Worth Lagoon and county natural areas, the emergence of new businesses focused on ecotourism and increased awareness nationally and globally of the Palm Beaches as a world-class ecotourism destination. And whereas the county's strategic planning and performance management environmental protection cross-department team, made up of thirteen departments, include one of six strategic priorities for the county that promotes programs and activities that protect, preserve, and enhance natural resources while providing sustainable living and developing a climate of resilience. And whereas all people, regardless of race, gender, income, or geography, have a right to a healthy, sustainable environment with economic growth and opportunity. And whereas all citizens, businesses, and institutions are encouraged to use this day as a reminder to combat climate change and environmental degradation, support green economy initiatives, and encourage others to undertake similar actions. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Palm Beach County, Florida, assembled in regular session this fourth day of April twenty-two-three, that April twenty-second, two thousand twenty-three in Palm Beach County is hereby proclaimed Earth Day. Congratulations.
Thank you so much. Good morning. The people standing before you exemplify the extraordinary collaboration that occurs within the county departments as well as throughout the community to help support the natural resources of our beautiful county. On behalf of all of us, a most heartfelt thank you to Commissioner Bernard for sponsoring the proclamation, to our mayor, and to the rest of the Board of County Commissioners, our county administrator, Verdina Baker, as well as her assistant county administrators for all working together to support these efforts. The novelist Wendell Berry famously said, "The earth is what we all have in common." As we coexist in our beautiful county, it is essential to remember that we are all connected by water, by land, by air, by our communities. Taking care of our natural resources for ours and for future generations is a God-given responsibility that we cannot take lightly. Although I consider every day Earth Day in Palm Beach County, especially at our Department of Environmental Resources Management, the Office of Resiliency, and our Water Resources Office with the work that we do, we are so thankful to have this proclamation that takes a moment to focus on the importance of taking care of our earth for the entire community. Thank you so much, and a special shout-out for Amanda Waite from the Angari Foundation, who was an important partner in our community. Thank you.
Good morning. And as they're taking their picture, Carrie Howitt, our public defender, if you'd like to come up and join me for this proclamation. We are declaring April twenty-two-three as Second Chance Month in Palm Beach County. Whereas more than six-hundred-thousand men and women leave American prisons every year, more than eleven million people annually cycle through our jails, and national recidivism rates top over fifty percent. And whereas the annual per-person costs for incarceration are approximately twenty-eight thousand for a state prison, and forty-eight thousand nine hundred for a Palm Beach County jail, and eighty-one thousand dollars a year for a juvenile residential facility. And whereas thousands of people return from incarceration to Palm Beach County each year. And whereas Second Chance Month was created after the Second Chance Act, a law passed in Congress in two thousand and eight that supports work to improve reentry. Whereas initiatives that support individuals transitioning back into the community are built on extensive research and tireless efforts of local leaders, policymakers, correction officials, and others who champion efforts to reduce reoffending in order to promote public safety, strengthen collaboration across agencies, and build stronger communities. Whereas the work done by the county's Reentry Task Force through collaboration with the criminal justice partners and reentry providers such as the Lord's Place, Riviera Beach Reentry Center, and Riviera Beach Integrated Healthcare Systems has continued, has contributed to making Palm Beach County a national leader in reentry services and reducing recidivism. Whereas the men and women and youth returning from incarceration to Palm Beach County benefit by reuniting families, obtaining employment, finding stable housing, and having access to resources. The demand for reentry services remains high, and the investments we make in each returning residence will continue to contribute to enhancing public safety in Palm Beach County. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Palm Beach County, Florida, assembled in regular session on this fourth day of April twenty-two-three, that April twenty-two-three in Palm Beach County is hereby proclaimed Second Chance Month. And I just want to take a moment of personal privilege to thank you for being here today, Carrie, public defender Howitt, for the work that you, in your office, ensure, along with our state attorney Dave Ehrenberg, to see that justice prevails in Palm Beach County, but that we work together to make a better community for us all. And I know you're a leader in this movement for our county. So thank you very much for being with us today.
And I want to thank the county for your support of reentry services. The county has really been a leader in this area, and we are very appreciative of that. I will tell you, the Reentry Task Force is a unique body. We started it in two thousand and eight as a collaboration of service providers, corrections officials, county folks, as well as returning citizens, to really inform us about what is needed in our county for people who are leaving incarceration to get on their feet, to get a healthy start. And since two thousand and eight, we have done great things. We've partnered with DOC, we have done lots of work in our county jail, and really in our community. The thanks really goes to the county, but also our many service providers in our county who provide human services to people returning from incarceration, and then really our returning citizens, our folks who have taken on the challenge of becoming useful, productive, contributing members of our community. And it's not an easy task. It's not an easy task when we have really taken everything from them, and they have been removed from their families and their communities for many years, and yet they have stepped up to the challenge. The reentry efforts in Palm Beach County are something for all of us to be proud of. Our recidivism rate for folks who participate in reentry is about a quarter of what it is for folks who do not participate in the services that are offered. So we've made great strides, but we have great places to go. And with your support and the support of our community, we will continue this work. I appreciate this proclamation. I accept it on behalf of the Reentry Task Force, many of whom are here today, and the County Public Safety Department, which has been instrumental in our efforts. So thank you again.
Would Jonathan Brown, Sherri Howard, Carlos Sorano, Dorit Miller, I'll bring in the county administrator Verdina Baker, James Green, and Taruna Malhotra, please come forward? Before I read the proclamation, I just want to personally thank county administration, county administrator Verdina Baker, her entire team, Community Services Department, the Department of Housing and Economic Sustainability in regards to addressing housing needs in Palm Beach County. And so I just want to thank you for your dedication to the residents of Palm Beach County. This proclamation declaring April tenth through the fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three, as National Community Development Week. Whereas April tenth through the fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three, has been designated as National Community Development Week by the National Community Development Association to celebrate the Community Development Block Grant, known as CDBG Program, and the Home Investment Partnerships Home Program, two valuable programs that have made tremendous contributions to the viability of our community. And whereas the CDBG Program provides annual funding to local communities to support affordable housing, suitable living environments, and economic opportunities for low and moderate-income persons. And whereas the Home Program provides annual funding to local communities to create decent, safe, and affordable housing for low-income persons. And whereas, over the past five years, the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development has awarded Palm Beach County more than thirty-two million dollars in CDBG program funds and eleven million dollars in home program funds. And whereas the CDBG Program funds assisted with social services for thirteen thousand one hundred and fifty-two persons, including individuals experiencing homelessness, persons with physical and developmental disabilities, survivors of domestic violence, abused and neglected children, and youth aging out of foster care. Construction of fifty-two infrastructure and public facility projects benefiting more than four hundred and thirty-two thousand two hundred and six persons, including parks, community centers, homeless facilities, health centers, roadways, drainage and water, and sewer improvements, and economic development activities creating three thousand four hundred and ninety-seven full-time jobs, and assisting in the establishment... ...in the establishment or expansion of nineteen thousand eight hundred and thirty-eight businesses through technical assistance, sourcing of financing, business incubation, and support services. And whereas the Home Program funds assisted fifty-two low-to-moderate-income home buyers, purchased their first home, expended our affordable housing stock with new construction of fifty-nine homes, and rehoused one hundred and eighty-two homeless individuals and families. And whereas our community opposes any attempts to eliminate the CDBG and home programs and urges Congress to recognize the outstanding work being done locally and nationally. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Palm Beach County, Florida, assembled in regular session this fourth day of April twenty-two-three, that April tenth through the fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three in Palm Beach County is hereby proclaimed National Community Development Week. Congratulations.
Commissioner Bernard, thank you so much for sponsoring this. Mayor, Commissioners, thank you all so much for giving our department and our partners the platform to actually administer these programs. As you've seen from the proclamation, it's not just us, it's us working with our community partners, municipalities, our public service agencies, individuals that are looking to buy individuals who need their homes preserved. CDBG, in my opinion, is the most flexible program, and it allows us to help everyone from that single mother to that senior who needs housing. So we thank you all so much. Administrator Baker and Dorit, thank you so much for the guidance that you all provide us in administering these programs. And to my staff and to our team and to our Community Services Department that really carries out that ground level, that grassroots level work with our populations that are homeless or at risk of homelessness, I thank you so much.
Good morning. I just want to echo those sentiments. We have the opportunity to interface with individuals who are struggling each and every day. And the difference that these funds and these programs make on the lives of our families is, you know, something that I carry with me and that you all should be very proud of. It makes a tremendous difference in our community and with our families. And so I appreciate the partnership with the Department of Housing and Economic Development under the leadership of Jonathan and the support that we get from the Board and county administration has been great, and we appreciate everything that you guys continue to do as well. Thank you.
Can I ask that Chief Patrick Kennedy, Assistant Chief David Woodside, and Drowning Prevention Coalition manager Anna Stewart, please join me at the lectern.
Good morning. We are declaring that April twenty-two-three in Palm Beach County as Drowning Prevention Awareness Month. Whereas regardless of race, age, gender, socioeconomic background, drowning and near drowning incidents can occur. Whereas accidental drowning is one of the leading causes of death of children under five years of age in South Florida. Whereas during fiscal year two thousand twenty-two, the Drowning Prevention Coalition provided two hundred and thirty-three in-person and thirty-five virtual water safety drowning prevention activity education programs, of which over nineteen thousand eight hundred Palm Beach County residents benefited. Whereas in the event of a lapse in supervision, other safety features that limit or delay unintended access to water are critical components in drowning prevention. And whereas through communication and community action and organizational partnerships, and promoting the importance of water safety and swimming lessons via education, Palm Beach County can achieve the goal of zero preventable drownings. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Palm Beach County, Florida, assembled in regular session on this day, fourth day of April twenty-two-three, that April twenty-two-three in Palm Beach County is hereby proclaimed Drowning Prevention Awareness Month. And let's be clear, the best way to prevent drowning is knowing how to swim. And so we need to do our part in making sure that every child, no matter how young, in Palm Beach County learns how to swim. We have water all around us, and we want to make sure that our children grow up safe and healthy, and by teaching them how to swim at as early ages as possible, we can make that a reality for our county. So thank you for being here and congratulations.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, Administrator Baker, thank you for this. Fire rescue is usually recognized for its reactive response. Anna Stewart and Bambi from Drowning Prevention represent the prevention side very passionately, on a small scale, with a staff of two, constantly out there either giving lessons, making sure they have access to lessons, or just talking about the prevention part of drowning. So I want to have Anna say a few words.
Thank you. First of all, I would just like to thank the Palm Beach County Board of County Commissioners, Mayor Weiss, for doing this proclamation for us. We also want to thank the Children's Services Council of Palm Beach County, and of course, Palm Beach County Fire Rescue in supporting our lifesaving endeavors. Bambi and I continuously and tirelessly try to enhance water safety and drowning prevention throughout Palm Beach enhance water safety and drowning prevention throughout Palm Beach County, and we want everybody to be water-safe and water-smart. If you are interested in a free drowning prevention presentation, we are available at all times. Just give us a call, okay? Thank you.[611.82][611.82](applause)
Very good. While they're taking pictures, Lois Pope is one of America's leading philanthropists. And today, and today, we in the county commission are going to recognize Lois Pope and all of her achievements as truly unique. Combining your unparalleled commitment to disabled veterans with your ardent support of animal welfare, Mrs. Pope advocated for Congress to pass legislation requiring military working dogs to be brought back to U.S. soil so they can unite with their human soldiers and continue to support and serve each other. Dogs that have served in the five branches of the military now have a permanent physical tribute to their courage, thanks to you, Mrs. Pope. You have endowed the American Military Hero Dog Monument, located here in Palm Beach County at the Tri-County Animal Rescue. In partnership with the American Humane Society, Mrs. Pope created the K-9 Medal of Courage, the highest honor given to military service dogs, which is awarded annually in a Washington, D.C. ceremony. Her love and advocacy of animal welfare inspired Mrs. Pope to give $1.5 million to the Tri-County Animal Rescue, the largest single donation the organization has ever received. This gift endowed the Pope, it's called the Lois Pope Pet Clinic, which is a veterinary center geared specifically to providing low-cost or free veterinarian services to low-income families for their pets. With the impact of COVID-19 pandemic undermined, and especially how it has affected needy children close to home, Mrs. Pope made a $1 million donation to the Palm Beach County Food Bank to endow its meal program for food insecure kids in the county. In gratitude, the Food Bank renamed the program Lois's Food for Kids. Since its inception, thousands of underserved children have now received a healthy and nutritious meal when they're not in school. In addition, Mrs. Pope provided the funding to the Food Bank for a new refrigerated trailer to enhance its ability to store and to provide more perishable foods. Spurred by the heart-wrenching images of Ukrainian refugee children fleeing their homeland, Mrs. Pope donated $1 million to save the children, so that the needs of the children and the families would be able to be taken care of. She's given $12 million to Baskin Palmer Eye Institute to create the Lois Pope Center for Retinal and Macular Degeneration Research, the largest gift ever received by Baskin Palmer in memory of your mom, who suffered from macular degeneration prior to her death. She was also honored by the Miami Project Bonoculti Fund to Cure Paralysis with the outstanding prestigious humanitarian award. You are amazing. You've done so much, Mrs. Pope. And you've always been one of my mentors in seeing how you have done, not only to give large checks of money, but to make sure that the money goes to the recipients. You always make sure that the money doesn't go necessarily to the administration, but to the recipients of your charity. You are amazing, and I am so proud to honor you today to be part of the county commission who honors you today. Your mother, a grandmother, and a great-grandmother. You've rescued many, many people, but this is, this is the line that really got me. She's done five marathons in her life. I mean, that is extraordinary. So today, on behalf of the people of Palm Beach County and the county commission, we are declaring that this day, April 4th, 2023, in Palm Beach County is hereby proclaimed Lois Pope Day. Congratulations. 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 Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you for this amazing prestigious honor. I don't know how to express my gratitude to those who, all of you who've made this day possible. So could you please stand when I call your name? Vice Mayor Maria Sacks for sponsoring the proclamation. The Honorable Mayor Greg Weiss. And Commissioners Maria Moreno, Michael Barnett, Marcy Woodward, Mac Bernard, and Sarah Baxter. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you, thank you.[953.23][953.23](applause) Well, to have a day, thank you. To have a day named after you is really something I could never, even in my wildest dreams, have ever dreamed about. But as meaningful as it is, and as deeply touched as I am, and I must say thank you for doing it on April 4th instead of April 1st. I'm really very grateful for that. Thank you. To me, the Lois Pope Day is really about all the people I've been privileged to help and to meet over many, many years. When I started my foundations, my goal was always to give voice to the voiceless and to give strength to the most vulnerable in our society, like the 4 million disabled American veterans, more than 4 million disabled veterans now, and all those who died before them. So we built a memorial in Washington, D.C., in our nation's capital, and dedicated it in the year 2014, and it's called the American Veterans Disabled for Life Memorial. And it's dedicated to the sacrifices and the courage of all of our disabled American veterans. So the dogs and other animals who are being abused and are abandoned in war, in emergency situations, through the Puffs for Patriots Program. Children who didn't have enough food to get through the day through Lois's Food for Kids Program. Men, women, and children who are paralyzed and suffering from spinal cord injuries and neurological diseases at the Lois Pope Life Center. Older adults with macular degeneration and other eye-blinding diseases at the Baskin Palmer Eye Institute, all of them, and so many others. So this day, April 4th, would not even be possible if I had not met with the afflicted and those suffering and taken action to help them. So on their behalf, as much as mine, I thank you again. I thank you again for bestowing this wonderful, amazing honor on me. Thank you.[1100.01][1100.01](applause)
I'll give you the proclamation.
All right. Grantley Colthrust, if you could, please come up. It is my honor to present the certificate of recognition for your dedication, commitment, reliability, and leadership while maintaining the integrity of the election process. Grantley Colthrust has excelled in a number of positions, including inspector, assistant site supervisor, site supervisor during early voting, super clerk on Election Day for the Adopt a Precinct Program, and assistant to the Vote by Mail Department in supervised voting at assisted living communities. He has always been willing to work whenever and wherever he has been needed, only been assigned to the same-day election precinct twice, and never worked in his home precinct. His dependability and flexibility have been greatly appreciated. So presented on this fourth day of April 2023, your certificate of recognition. Could you take a picture with me?
Yeah, I'd like to.
Of course.
I would like to thank the Board of Commission and Palm Beach Supervisors of the Election Office for recognizing me as a dedicated hard worker, and I much appreciate it. Thank you.[1209.47][1209.47](applause)
So I wanted to just thank you very much, Commissioners. Commissioner Baxter, thank you for recognizing our election worker of the year. Our poll workers, as you know, it takes us about 5,000 election workers. Theron Todd here is our poll worker manager. He's in charge of all of them. And so it takes a lot to do. The poll workers have done such an amazing job for us. We're going to continue to need them as we move into this next election. As we know, we just finished up municipal elections, and we had, if we're ever going to talk again about how everybody's vote matters, we had District 2 in Boynton Beach had a race that was decided by four votes. So of course, that went into a recount. And I'm pleased to say that all of our logic and accuracy testing, the recount, and our manual audit following the recount, all were 100% match. So we're really, thank you to all of the folks here. And a lot of that really is because of the poll workers and because of the work that they do to protect the vote at the polls. So again, we thank you all very much for recognizing our wonderful Poll Worker of the Year, and we look forward to continuing to work with you to deliver great elections. Thank you.[1325.51][1325.51](applause) If it's okay, Theron, this award is actually named after one of our poll workers who tragically died. So I thought perhaps Theron could tell you a little bit about that.
Thank you, Supervisor. This award was deemed after Charles DeLonge. He was a poll worker as a deputy on Election Day at Precinct 1010 at Sunfest Chapel. In November 2008, Mr. DeLonge was killed by a tragic car accident while taking down a "Vote Here" sign. On November 4th election, Mr. DeLonge was beloved by his community, and especially by his fellow poll workers at the supervisor of elections. Every year since then, in honor of Mr. DeLonge's lifelong commitment to his community, we recognize a poll worker who has demonstrated exceptional service, dedication, and by presenting them with the Charles DeLonge Award. And this year, it is to Grantley Colthrust, who exemplifies everything that we look for in a poll worker. Grantley has never turned us down when we ask him for an assignment, where he's going to go, training class. My staff here have all assigned him somewhere. Also, our assistant Vote by Mail manager who does supervise assisted living voting, she asked me one day, she said, "Do you have a clerk, a poll worker, that I could use?" And I said, "Grantley." And within five minutes, 10 minutes, she was on the phone, and he just said yes, didn't ask where he was going or anything. So Grantley, this is truly, truly an honor to give you and recognize you. Okay? Thank you, sir.[1448.82][1448.82](applause)
Well, I have to say it's my honor to do this next group of presentations. We are going to be presenting certificates of appreciation to these PBSO officers for their community policing efforts. They become members of the community. They go above and beyond, often volunteering at community events, delivering food, teaching kids, and forging relationships with residents. I know that Edna Runner and Houston Tate are here because many of you are at the Edna W. Runner Tutorial Center handing out food or just teaching safety to our kids. You've been at, as I said, at Ednas. You've welcomed residents at Cabana Colony at Fall Fest. You've been at Jupiter Farms Hoedown Music Festival. Several of you are at Palm Beach Shores, St. Patrick's Day Parade. And you've been at the Key Ceremony for Our Homes for Our Troops. There are so, I could go on and on. These were just in my district. But I could go on and on saying how much you do for our community, how important it is that you're recognized by us. Because what you do makes a community a community. It makes it a family, and it shows that we can look at our police officers and respect them and work with them. So can I please have Sergeant Hightower, Deputy Cassie, Deputy Ellis, Deputy Ford, Deputy Gomez, Deputy Pleznik, Deputy Robinson, Deputy Russell, and Deputy Woods up here, please? And, oh my God, you each get a, you each get one of these. I'm working on my muscles today. Deputy Cassie, Deputy Ellis, Deputy Ford, Deputy Gomez, Deputy Pleznik, Deputy Robinson, Deputy Russell, and Deputy Woods. And I know we're going to take a picture. I know that Commissioner Runner would like to say a couple of words. Any of you that want to also tell us why this is, why you do this. But Edna, go ahead.
We want to thank, without your support, families, you've taken care of them, and sickness, and through the time that we needed help with food, and you continue to support us. Even our neighborhood, the crime has gone down because of your support. I know you looked at me when you said while I was here. The Mamba Bee wants to tell you. We appreciate you guys, and we love you.
Thank you.[1615.01][1615.01](applause)
A board picture, okay?
Yes.
Okay. Houston, did you want to say anything?
Yes, I must say something. First of all, this has just been an amazing time for the county to serve our CCRT communities. We started off with county administrator Baker and assistant county administrator Patrick Rutter asking us to see what we could do to serve our communities. But we had the commission behind us. We had Commissioner Weiss has been out there. Commissioner Moreno has been out there, working in our trucks, taking food out. This has been an amazing, we started off serving food seven days a week. That is a very tough thing to do. These gentlemen here were taking food from Jupiter all the way down to Boca. Many of the districts couldn't give us the help. District 3 unanimously stepped forward to make this happen. These are the most wonderful heroes that I have ever seen in my life, literally. And I'm just going to give you one quick story. Not only were they working, but I don't know if you guys remember, in Gramercy Park, there was a young man, his name was Lydell. He loved PBSO, and so he asked the president of the association if his birthday, if PBSO could come by his house, right? So we told PBSO, and that was it. We did just, just told them it was his birthday. They came with about 10 cars through Gramercy Park. They had gifts. They came to his house. I was so glad that this was filmed on Channel 25. To hear that young man express his love for PBSO and to express his love for the community is something I've never seen before. So that's the human side to what these good-looking folks have done. And this gentleman had to go on vacation. I'm so glad they, they couldn't even go on vacation, working seven days a week. So give them a round of applause. I think I haven't expressed what they've been able to do for our community. Thank you so much.[1743.71][1743.71](applause)
Come on up, they want a picture up there.
And now I'd like to recognize our clerk of the Circuit Court and Comptroller, Joe Abruzzo, for a special presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I believe you will all find it truly special with some good news I am about to report. But first off, I want to thank the County Commission, and specifically you, Mr. Mayor, for serving as the Chair of our Investment Policy Committee. You set the standards by which our office can operate and invest in the different products that we have, and we'll speak a little bit about that today. Our team proactively, thoughtfully management of the county investment portfolio has resulted in record-breaking returns for Palm Beach County and its residents. When I took office in 2001, I inherited about a $27 million investment return on our portfolio. I'm about to report a lot more today. And that's due to several factors, which I will go through in detail. But one of the first things that I did when I took office, I ordered the divestment from several of our products that I didn't think were up to par. And then I came to you, the Board of County Commissioners, who upped us in our investment in Israeli bonds, which at the time were far outperforming our U.S. bonds. In 2022, the portfolio earned 32.6 million in investment income. In fiscal year 2023, we are on track for an exceptional year. If interest rates stay at current levels or higher, we expect to earn close to 160 million in investment income, at least four times better than 2022, and the highest ever earned in any fiscal year in county's history. I would submit that this gain we are experiencing is truly exceptional. We did this when the worst bond market performance in almost 30 years. One thing that we decided to do when I took office, or I continue to do, I should say, is we invest our money in-house. But one thing that I did do, I brought in the gold standard bearers of those who manage government money, like Goldman Sachs and several other financial institutions, just to get an idea, if they had our money, what would happen? So we got the full reports. I decided to keep it in-house with our investment team, which I will speak about in a moment. And every six months or so, I get reports that if we went down that path, and we paid these outrageous fees, and if they had our money, what would happen? And we are far outperforming doing it in-house. And that's really due to our financial side. Ray Cliff Brown is here, our Chief of Finance, Felicia Landerman, who acts as our in-house county treasurer, and John Burford, who is our expert financial analysis. And just to let you know, as your comptroller, I also am the treasurer of the county and the chief financial officer. When I took office in 2021, I had real concerns about inflation and how it would affect our portfolio. Market rates started to climb in August 2021, and the treasurer team redeemed lower-yield CDs early with little to no penalties. Any cash redemptions or maturities was invested into money market accounts that were tied to the upper bond of the Fed Fund rate, meaning we were able to benefit from subsequently rate increases and avoid taking on market risk. When I served as Vice Chair of Finance and Tax in the Senate, and I was actually ranking member on Ways and Means, I sat through about 10 years of financial analysis reporting by our financial experts at the state, and was on record all the way back in 2016, extremely concerned about inflation and our debt, which I will get to in a little bit. The overall portfolio duration shortened from one year to two-tenths of a year. By the time the Fed raised rates initially in March 2022, the portfolio was positioned to benefit from each rate increase, with 82% of our portfolio tied directly to the Fed Fund rate. When I took office, the portfolio was yielding a 0.6% return. Now we are just about at 5%. Our portfolio performance is better than you're seeing elsewhere. In fiscal year 2022, the portfolio total return was 1%. This is in sharp contrast to one-to-three-year Treasury Bond Fund Index, which decreased 4% over the same period. The index is a benchmark for short-term fixed income portfolios such as ours. The negative total return of the index was due to bond prices losing, exceeding interest income by a wide margin. We avoid such losses by structuring the portfolio to be almost fully invested in cash and floating-rate investments. And looking ahead, almost 90% of the portfolio is currently invested in bank certificates for deposit or money market accounts. With the few recent bank failures, as we're all aware of, there is no need for concern over the safety of these deposits. All deposits are safe and secure, invested in banks that are part of the State of Florida Qualified Public Depository Program. As such, all deposits are collateralized by government securities as required by statute. Also, what the state did, which was really great and different than many other states, when we public deposit our money, the state by law makes sure that all the banks that take government money are shared in a pool, so that if one bank fails, the other banks have to step in and provide for our loss, which is really important. Currently, the evidence from the Federal Reserve commentary indicates that they intend to continue to rate the rate increases until inflation falls to 2%. Currently, it's at 4.7%. The fiscal market expects rates to peak in May, then gradually decline, if that truly happens. Once the Federal Reserve pauses on rate hikes, the investment team will take measures to extend investment maturities within the parameters of the county investment policy, meaning that as soon as we see that the Fed halts the rate hikes, we'll go into longer-term investments to lock up those great rates. So we have, these type of funds are close to it for years to come. One of, I did want to speak a little bit about where we're at nationally and our debt. I think it's important. We just heard some, obviously, great news for Palm Beach County. But as we sit today, we have about a $31.6, closing in on $31.7 trillion national debt, which is by far the largest in our nation's history. We have spending, our federal government, and we're not even getting into the states, is spending about little over $6 trillion, and we only have 4.6 trillion of income coming in currently. Make a long story short, we are close to a $1.6 trillion deficit as we sit here today, just in this fiscal year. We have a trade deficit that's not included in those numbers of close to 1.2 trillion, meaning that we're selling overseas less than those who are eating off our plates here by over $1 trillion. It is extremely challenging times. You know, we got here, in my opinion, I'm sure many of you remember, Bill Clinton, Newt Gingrich, Leon Panetta, who's the Budget Chair and White House Chief of Staff at the time, worked really hard together, probably one of the most overlooked bipartisan efforts to balance our federal budget and actually have a surplus. Then with the Iraq War and things of that nature, we just started to plummet in trillions and trillions and trillions of dollars worth of debt. I do not know how we are ever going to manage getting out of a 31, soon to be $32 trillion credit card bill with the deficit, but it's extremely problematic. And parties aside, philosophies aside, it's just the hole that we are in. One thing that we saw happen, which I was greatly concerned about, China and Russia have decided to stop using the U.S. dollar as the world currency. What that means, right now, the world has always operated with the dollar being, or when I say always, in our lifetimes, always operated as the dollar being the world reserve currency, which is why we're able to keep raising the debt limits and get these low interest rates for all this debt that we have. If China and Russia's plan, and the world plan is to remove us as the world currency, we will never be able to go out and keep borrowing money like we're doing, and our interest rates are going to skyrocket. We've paid over $4 trillion in interest alone. That is going to go much, much higher if that happens, so it's obviously a great concern. I'm telling you this because I will always watch our portfolio. I'm not held in a bubble by just what's going on at home. I know that these world events will absolutely affect the billions of dollars that we have here at the county. We are currently holding right now, you do have a spreadsheet in front of you, but I see that's from 2022, September 30. It shows $3 billion. We have $4 billion, just under $4 billion. It's like 3968. Yeah. So approximately $4 billion in our accounts right now. So this is serious money that we always have to take a global look to make sure we're operating correctly. I'm always open to questions, but the 160 million, I think is great. You will receive the majority of that to spend in the community as you see fit, and we are going to take every effort to keep that money going, keep that investment return going. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. I just want to compliment your investment team, their efforts at getting the best return while protecting the principal and never putting the principal at risk, so that our taxpayers' funds will be returned to them as they had made available for us to utilize. So their efforts, and unfortunately, probably go unnoticed, but certainly not by me, and I know not by our board. So I want to thank you all, and thank you for your leadership, sir, in making sure that we have our investments protected, but a wonderful return as well. And so thank you very much, and appreciate all you all do.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Anyone else? Commissioner Bernard, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Clerk Abruzzo, you started saying, like, you started as a clerk in 2001, and I was like, I know, you started, I was like, man, you were saving us money in high school. So, but I know you were like thinking about just, you know, how to protect the residents in Palm Beach County even at that time. So really appreciate you providing us this update regarding the projected funds that we would receive. That's record, and that's a testament to you, your whole team. Thanks for being here. And also thanks for providing us the global update regarding our debt, because it's so important for us to know exactly what's going on, not just in the state of Florida, but also in the United States and globally. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Sacks, you're recognized.
Did you want to respond to Commissioner Bernard?
Thank you, Commissioner Sacks. You know, some high schoolers dream about being athletes or big things. I was thinking about being a clerk.
Honorable Abruzzo, I didn't know you in high school, but I have a feeling you weren't thinking about being a clerk. But I know that while you were in the Florida Senate, you were selected to serve on the Budget Committee and looking at directing the finances of this great state of Florida. And now you're here with us, with this great team, to work on the county's finances. So we are truly, truly blessed to have you and this team to further our finances, especially in this whirlwind of global finances and the position of the United States in the world financial markets. So thank you, and I want to keep you here as long as we can. I don't want you to think about going anywhere else. We want to keep you here and keep an eye on our finances as you have done so well with your team. Thank you, Honorable Abruzzo. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
All right. Thank you very much for your report, and have a wonderful day.
Appreciate it, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Okay. Moving on to our regular agenda, this is Item 5A1. This is for our airports, and this involves a Category 5 threshold amount exceeding $325,000, which is why it's in front of us, and this is Consulting Agreement for General Airport Planning and Design.
Mayor, I don't think we need a presentation. I'll go ahead and move this item.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Moreno. We have a second by Vice Mayor Sacks. All in favor, all opposed? Thank you. That motion passes 7 to 0. All right, moving on to Item 5B1. This is from our Office of Financial Management and Budget, and this is, we had made a request regarding personnel classification and pay grades for County Commission Administrative Assistants and County Commission Secretaries.
Good morning, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Board, County Administrator Baker. I'm Reginald Duran, Assistant County Administrator. I'm joined at table by David, sorry, Wayne Conjory, Director of Human Resources, and David Adi from the County Attorney's Office. Back on January 31, 2023, the Board of County Commissioners asked Administration to bring back to the Board specific options related to personnel classifications and pay grades for County Commission Administrative Assistants and County Commission Secretaries. We're presenting these options as requested, seeking further direction from the Board. The last time there was any modifications done to this resolution was back in 2017, which essentially the highlight of it was adding an additional promotion to the process that would be during the fourth, the start of the fourth year, rather, the start of the fifth year, for individuals in the ranks of Secretary or Administrative Assistant. Our current pay policy by the county gives an individual who receives one pay grade advancement a 3% increase, or two pay grade advancements, 6% increase. If the promotion is three pay grades, they get 10% increase. Moving on to 2017 resolution, the purpose of this slide is just to demonstrate how the ascension occurs in terms of individuals moving through the process with the presumption that they continue to work throughout an eight-year period. That is option number one, which is the environment that we currently operate in. If we go with that, there will be no changes and no changes to the current pay grades. Option two would allow the Commissioner to give an individual 10% increase based, potentially, on some qualifiers, if the Board should choose to have qualifiers, to give them a 10% increase at the time of hire. And there, we just gave some examples as we were asked, recognizing the fact that many commissions will have perhaps unique additions they need for their district, which may not be outlined here. So there is some concern that we can't cover all the possibilities that might be important to the Commissioner to help them justify the additional 10% increase at time of hire. So this is what option two looks like. Again, upon hiring, they receive a 10% increase. They matriculate through the process, as we currently do, in terms of receiving pay increases as their position changes, as well as receiving across-the-board increases. For this scenario, we use 3%. We recognize- We recognize that that is not what it will always be in terms of across-the-board raises, but that's just what we use for example purposes. And finally, we have option three. Option three is basically a flat budget. For these demonstrating purposes, we use a figure of $250,000. Currently, that is the highest funded district in terms of personnel. It will allow individuals, if the Board should desire, to have three full-time equivalents, which actually could be more than three actual employees, if that be your desire. It would have no starting, I'm sorry, would have, we are recommending a starting pay grade minimum of $56,000. That's the base rate of pay grade 32. The starting rate would be dependent upon qualifications as determined by the District Commissioner. There would be no additional promotions. Annual compensation will be determined by District Commissioner. It is our belief that the across-the-board should be given to these individuals, or at least those dollars added to the pot, for the Commissioner to make the determination of how that would be distributed. So finally, again, for review, option one, maintain where we are today, status quo. Option two, one-time increase at the time of hire. And number three, a flexible budget allowing the Commissioner to distribute funds allocated to his district accordingly. I know I went through that rather quickly, but hopefully you got the gist. If you have any questions.
Commissioner Bernard, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Baker, just going into slide, I guess it's slide four. And Wayne, just to, just, I just want to make sure I understand, on the County Commission Administrative Assistants and the Secretary, do you think what we're starting right now is a fair amount for our current staff on the 12th floor?
It's competitive. It's competitive compensation currently, sir.
Okay, so you believe it's competitive?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I just want to make sure, thank you.
Commissioner Baxter, you're recognized.
Thank you, ma'am. So yesterday, it was brought to our attention and to mine and, I guess, the fellow Commissioners' attention that there was some concerns if we were to choose option three, because it is based off of how Broward pays their Commission staff. Is that correct?
I'm not aware of the concerns that were expressed specifically.
And so the concern is that we at the county here have been, our staff are considered appointees and not employees. Is that an accurate statement?
They're your employees.
If the attorney could answer, I'd have.
So, Commissioner, just so I'm understanding, you were talking from a legal perspective, how they're analyzed. So the question came up because the issue of pay equity has always been an issue among Commission staff. So the concerns about option three were specifically related to whether or not, if that was adopted, if there were any concerns from a legal standpoint. And one of the things that we thought was necessary to advise the Board of is that the federal regulations make it clear that elected representatives and their personal staff are, don't have civil rights available to them. In other words, they can't file claims for civil rights because they're not considered employees under the circumstances of which our regular employees who go through the HR process and are hired through a competitive process are employees. Now, one of the concerns is that while the courts have just unilaterally or universally made a determination that elected officials don't have civil rights, it's not so straightforward in terms of the people who are appointed by the elected officials. And when the issue of civil rights come up, the courts generally do an analysis as to whether or not the employees, though appointed, not coming through the HR process for their appointment, but during the tenure of their employment, are treated like employees. And if the court deems that, after doing a total analysis of the circumstances, deem that they are in fact operating like employees in all relevant respects, then they can avail themselves of civil rights.
Is it us as Commissioners that are treating them as employees because the policy doesn't say they're employees? Or is it the Administration that chooses to treat them? And then are we effectively not being allowed to initiate our own policies?
I'm not sure how to answer that, but what I'll say to you is that the county has some policies that are available for employees that have also been made available to Commission staff, the appointees. And those are some of the factors that are taken in consideration.
So if we were to choose option three, which seems to stay in line with them being appointees, would it then help if we added just clarification of them being employees to protect us legally?
I don't think you can put in words just to say this clarifies it. I think as long as they're going through the process, operating on leave benefits, tuition reimbursement, and all the other benefits, and things that their leave has to be approved by a county employee through HRIs just like an employee, I think those are the factors that matter.
And wouldn't then option two, I guess, give to more their employees and not appointees?
Can you be more specific?
So in option two, it's saying based on past experience, based on merits, based on all that, and that's how employees are hired generally at a company, that that would lead to them being more of an employee status, where if we're trying to give us more protection, option three is how Broward is doing it and has done it effectively, recognizing their job is only contingent upon us, the elected officials, being here and not guaranteed after which?
Well, there are two different things, just so we're clear.
Okay.
I'm not speaking on the policy issues as to what the Commission has discretion and the county administrator. So I don't know if it is the will of Commission and Administration to keep those policies in place and to have them treated, so I won't opine as to the propriety of that. What I will say is that having related experience, because the general idea is that the Commission, when a person is elected, they pick their staff however they want to. You know, so having guidelines as to what they should, how they should qualify is their prerogative. But it seems as though option three has one of those components as well, because I don't know what the criteria is, but it says, starting rate dependent upon qualification as determined by the District Commissioner. So if, so I guess if it's just not based on any specifics that looks like an employee, in that regard, it's less likely to look like an employee.
Okay, well, that, thank you, and I would like to make a motion to accept option three.
No, you need to, we need to see if we get a second.
If she, I can withdraw my motion and wait for questions?
You made a motion, we need to see if we get a second.
I was withdrawing.
Oh, you're going to withdraw your motion?
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner Woodward, you're recognized.
Yes, I had a question, and it's probably more for my fellow Board members. I had spoken my agenda review, asking about the possibility of having three administrative assistants instead of two administrative assistants and a secretary position, mostly because I know how, in my office, it's, there are three very equal but different positions, and having the hierarchy of two that are assistants, and when this is secretary, when really all three are very much a part of the team, pulling their own weight and cover for each other and learn each other's jobs. So if someone's on vacation or out sick, you know, it's very much a team. So that was the question, and I believe I asked if you could give us the numbers, if you were able to get that, if we eliminated the secretary position and just made it three assistants that would, at the hiring level, when you're bringing them in, so that way we don't have that third lower tier? Because I know in my own office, there's not really like a lower tier. There's experience level, of course, but everyone's equally important in my office. So, did you get those numbers?
Yes, ma'am, HR did provide those numbers. In the first year, the cost of the county had been additional approximately $40,000 to elevate the secretarial position to legislative aides. I'm sorry.
Like, that would be the increase for the entire Board, was the $40,000?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Let me ask to clarify that. $40,000 for, when you said $40,000 for the entire Board?
Across all districts, yes.
It would be?
Not cumulatively.
No, I don't, I'm not understanding what you're saying.
I'm saying the entire cost to the Board of County Commissioners is going to be $40,000. It varies by district.
Per year.
Yes, this first year.
Thank you. Commissioner Bernard, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I, initially, I was, you know, I was looking at, looking at this issue from the perspective of, you know, giving a one-time hire 10%. But, you know, with what Commissioner Woodward just brought up, you know, if the Board wants to take a look at that sometimes in the future, you know, that's something that I'm okay with. But, you know, I would probably prefer that we don't do anything right now. And if this Board wants to take a look at eliminating that District Secretary position and to entertain that in the future, that's something that, you know, I'd be okay with looking at. But I don't believe option three is the best position for us. Option two, I think that there's some pay equity that I have concerns with regarding our current assistants that we do have right now, because potentially you may bring in somebody that gets this 10% increase, and they're getting paid more than the current assistants that you do have. So I would have some concerns regarding that. So for me, right now, it's to do nothing. And then if the Board wants to address Commissioner Woodward's issue in the future, that's something that I'm okay with. So I guess my motion would be to do nothing. And to take a look at, while we're doing our budget negotiations or budget workshop in, like, that's coming up, and if the Board wants to address that at that time, and if it works with Administration, then they can bring that up, and that could be a decision that we make, so that's my motion.
All right, just to clarify the motion, the motion is, your motion is to do nothing with the current pay plan, but to direct staff to bring back during the budget hearings what, eliminating the District Secretary and replacing it with another administrative assistant?
But that's something that the Board could decide at that time.
The Board would decide that, okay. Just clarifying, the, okay, so we have a motion now. We have a second from Commissioner Marino. All right, any further discussion? Okay, I will call the question. All in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay, so that will be, it will pass five to two.
Dismissed.
The, so it would be Commissioner Baxter and Commissioner Burnett are opposed. Commissioner Woodward, Commissioner Marino, Vice Mayor Sacks, Commissioner Bernard, and myself are in favor.
Commissioner Sacks, or Vice Mayor Sacks, you're recognized.
Thank you. I'd just like to clarify that what we're going to do is we're going to take the two requests from Commissioner Baxter and also from Commissioner, well, let me, and Commissioner Woodward, and review them at the time that we review the budget and in terms of also what Commissioner Bernard spoke about, which?
That's not, that's not what we voted on.
Okay. No, 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 I know we didn't vote on that, but, but, but let me, so this is why I'm asking a question, not stating it. Are we going to review at time of budget the needs of the two Commissioners' staff in, at the time that we look at the budget for the county? In other words?
No.
Okay, so thank you to clarify.
Let me clarify again, if I get this right, and I'm looking to you, Commissioner Bernard. And I thought I restated it, but what we just, what we just said is we are doing nothing in regards to our current pay plan.
Correct.
What we, what we have directed staff to do is during our budgetary process to bring back if we were to eliminate the secretary, the District Secretary position, and replace it with a District Administrative Assistant, a District Aid. So that's what they are going to bring back, that budgetary impact of what that would be. And from there, the Board could decide if that was something they want to take up.
That's exactly what I was going to ask, is that this is, it's not?
But it didn't have, it does not include the blanket $250,000 open proposal. Okay, just to clarify.
So we're going to have, we're directing staff to look at, in light of our whole budget for the county, how, if we would eliminate a county secretarial position with that, with that pay grade, to upgrade it to a position of a Legislative Assistant, so that all three of those positions could be equal in pay because they are probably equal in their work, in their services. Did I, did I state that correctly, Mayor?
I believe you did.
Okay, thank you, thank you Commissioners, thank you.
Okay. I think, I think we have Commissioner Marino and then Commissioner Baxter.
Thank you, and thank you, Commissioner Baxter, for bringing this up. I actually had a similar discussion when I first became a county commissioner because I brought a young lady to work for me who actually took a $20,000 pay cut to work for me. And I do know that it is hard to find people to fill these positions and be competitive because it's just fine, it's hard to find people to work right now, period. I, I'm not, and obviously from the way the Board voted, I wasn't comfortable with a blanket budget of $250,000 because I do have a long-term, a longtime aide who has put in 30 years, and I think there should be some separation on that. So if we just did a blanket $250,000, you know, you could bring somebody in on day one and give them $100,000, whereas somebody who's worked here for 30 years is at that pay grade now. So that's why I wasn't comfortable with the $250,000. I am comfortable with the, having three aides. My office, actually, we only have two, I only have two at the moment, and for pretty much most of my time here, I've only had two aides. And finding someone to work in a secretarial position seems to be very difficult. So I am very much in favor of having three aides, and each aide might have a different job description, but that is within our office to figure out what that job description is. So I do appreciate the Board having this continued discussion. Commissioner Baxter, thank you for bringing it up, and I look forward to seeing what our financial impact would be because at the end of the day, this also is a budget item, so thank you.
Commissioner Baxter, you're recognized.
I was just going to ask if I had the support of my fellow Commissioners, and I do support having three aides versus just two and a secretary. I agree that that is, I think, makes the most sense. But I would also like to, in, with recent, and understanding that Commissioner Marino is not in favor of a pot, maybe reevaluate, our staff was not part of the Evergreen Study because they are not considered employees, and actually take a look and see if what we're paying them comparable to other counties is on par. We did have a slide that seemed to have disappeared that showed what all the staff was. We did have a slide that seemed to have disappeared that showed what all the staff was currently making. And so, I mean, you don't need to bring it up, we've already voted on the issue. I would just like, maybe when we come back to budget talks, to take a look at that staff and see their pays. I mean, with minimum rents being 25 to $3,000 a month, we need staff that lives here. And maybe take a look at that pay scale and maybe adjust from there during budget times, if I have the support of my Commissioners.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Moving on to item 5C1, and this is a lease agreement for some space, and this is for the Palm Beach County Sheriff's Office. Need a presentation? All right.
Mr. Mayor, if no one needs a presentation, I make a motion to approve items C1, A, and B.
We have a motion by Commissioner Bernard, a second by the Vice Mayor on items C1, A, and B. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, all oppose. That motion carries seven to zero. All right. Moving on to item 5C2. This is the purchase of a parcel of 1.3 acres of vacant land up north of Indian Town Road.
Mayor, I'm not sure we need a presentation. This is to continue our purchasing of land in Palmar, and I would like to make a motion to approve C2, A, B, C, D, E, and F.
We have a motion by Commissioner Marino approving, to approve item 5C2, A, B, C, D, E, and F. Any further discussion? Oh, I, oh, your lights. Any further discussion?
None.
And we have a second, or we have a second from Vice Mayor Sacks, sorry about that. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, all oppose. That motion carries seven to zero. Item 5C2.
C3.
Oh, so I'm 5C3, sorry. This is a, consider a wave of a conflict disclosed by Verdict Construction and its proposal in response to county's request for proposals for construction manager. Just to note for the public, the waiver has to do with Rex Kirby, who is president of Verdict, is a member of the county's Construction Board of Adjustment and Appeals, and the Infrastructure Certex Independent Citizen Oversight Committee. They, and they've retained a, an opinion from the Ethics, County Office of Ethics, found that both boards were purely advisory, and so the board has the opportu, option to waive this...
I'll make the motion that we have.
Second.
So, we have a motion by Commissioner Marino, a second by Commissioner Bernard. Does anyone have questions for staff on this matter? Not seeing any. All right. All in favor, and this is on items 5C3, A, B, and C. Okay? All in favor, all oppose. That motion carries seven to zero. And we're going to get a legislative update. If we don't mind, can we take like five minutes, so I can take a personal break before we start this? Because I know there's a lot of information to go over, and I want to be fully attentive. All right, we'll recess for five minutes. With, this is item 5D1. We do have one comment card, but this is a, a update on our legislative session.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, Administrator Baker. We are before you to give you a mid-session update. We are just about at the midpoint of the 2023 legislative session. Lot of things going on, and we want to go through a brief presentation with you and point out a couple of highlights, just some big-picture issues going on in the state, focus on our legislative agenda a little bit, and then a couple of other policy items. And then we also wanted to have a slide on just some federal issues that we're working on as well. So, with that, oh, I'll introduce our crew here that we've got. Ed Chase, our Intergovernmental Affairs Director, DeBora Posey Blocker, Blocker, Intergovernmental Affairs with Palm Tran, and then Scott Stone from the County Attorney's Office. So, thank you very much, and Ed will start us off.
All right. Good morning, Commissioners. We'll start with kind of a top 10 list, so going into session. Going into session, when we had reports from the governor on our legislative leadership, we kind of have an idea of a top 10 issues going forward, so I thought we'd just take a minute or two and talk about those, where they stand now. Number 10, tax holidays. The governor proposed several tax-related, or school-related tax holidays on clothes, school supplies, electronics. He also proposed permanently eliminating sales taxes on such things as cribs, and strollers, and shoes, and diapers for infants and toddlers. Todd, are you in favor of that? Yay. Very good. Usually those bills come about now in a proposed committee bill from the Senate Finance and Tax and the House Ways and Means. Haven't seen those. There have been two smaller bills going through the process, one for a tax exemption on diapers and adult incontinence products, and one tax exemption on private investigations. So, we would expect to see that full bill come out of those committees either this week or next. Number nine is school vouchers. After two decades of kind of gradually expanding school vouchers, HB1 this year made every Florida student eligible for taxpayer-funded vouchers that could be used for private school tuition and other expenses. The House cost estimate for that was $210 million. The Senate released a $2.2 billion cost estimate. However, that did include the cost of students already receiving those vouchers. That bill was signed by the governor last Monday. Number eight is school boards. We have two issues going on with school boards this year. Number one, we have lawmakers who want to amend the state constitution to allow for school board races to be, to change from nonpartisan races to partisan races. So, that is a House and Senate joint resolution, that'll be a ballot to be placed on the, on the, on the statewide ballot next year. It has already passed the House. It has one more Senate stop to go. The other school board issue is considering eight-year term limits for school board members. Just two years ago, they voted to implement a 12-year term limit. This would change that 12-year term limit to an eight-year term limit for school board. That has already passed the House, and it is in community fairs in the Senate tomorrow morning. Number seven, on lawsuit limits. Lawmakers wanted to try to help shield businesses and insurance companies from costly lawsuits. At the plan that they passed, and has already been signed by the governor, does a couple of things, mainly eliminating what are known as one-way attorney fees in lawsuits against insurers. It reduced from four years to two years the statute of limitations for filing negligence lawsuits, and it made it harder to pursue bad faith lawsuits against insurers. So, that, all that passed, that was signed by the governor last week as well. Number six, immigration. The current immigration bills that are floating around now does a couple of things. Number one, it does require hospitals to collect patient information on immigration status. It also would require private employers to use the e-Verify system to verify employment eligibility, and it also would prohibit counties and municipalities from providing funds to any person, entity, or organization to issue identification documents to an individual who does not provide proof of lawful presence in the United States. That bill has not yet been heard in the House, and it is in its final stop in the Senate. Number five, guns. The bill passed is, allows people to carry concealed weapons without obtaining a state concealed weapons license. This is not open carry, it remains concealed carry, but without the step of licensure. There was a very quick bill filed lowering the purchase age to 18 for long rifles in the House. That was quickly taken back when the Senate did not show an interest in, in receiving that. So, that bill passed the House and the Senate, and was signed by the governor yesterday. Defamation, the governor is looking to potentially weaken protections for journalists to make it easier to sue news media for defamation. So, it's kind of just two things. Number one, it would establish the presumption that any statement from an anonymous source, including whistleblowers, is automatically deemed false. And number two, it would narrow the definition of what a public figure is. So, currently, if you are a private person and you sue for defamation, you only need to prove simple negligence. If you're a public person, you must show actual malice. That phrase seems familiar, it's because it's happening with Fox and Dominion suit right now. So, to prove actual malice, you have to prove that the person making those statements knew those statements were false or acted with reckless disregard for the truth. Both of these issues would potentially run afoul of the 1964 U.S. Supreme Court ruling known as New York Times v. Sullivan. So, if this does pass, we would expect that to go directly and immediately to court. Number three, death penalty. After the Parkland school shooter was sentenced to life in prison, because the jurors could not come with a unanimous jury recommendation, this bill would allow death sentences to be based on the recommendations of eight of 12 jurors to recommend a death penalty. That bill passed the Senate on Friday, and it is currently on second reading in the House, ready to move on. Number two is abortion. A bill that would ban physicians from performing most abortions beyond six weeks of pregnancy, except for, exceptions for cases of rape, incest, human trafficking, fetal abnormalities, or if the mother is at risk of severe injury or death, was passed by the Senate on Monday, and it currently is on second reading in the full House. And finally, number one, affordable housing. You were kind of up there the very first week of session to watch the Live Local bill pass. We'll start with what it does financially, which is, which is substantial, to say the least. It could be up to a record 800 million, 811 million dollars for affordable housing. The ship funding, the State Housing Initiative partnerships is, is funded at $252 million. Our estimate for what we will receive in Palm Beach County for that share would be just a little north of $12 million. The sale program, the State Apartment Incentive Loan Fund, is funded at $259 million. That is $109 million more than was funded last year. Included in that money is, is an additional $150 million from general revenue that does not come from Doc Stamps, so, so that will come, additional money coming directly from general revenue. The Florida Hometown Heroes Program is fully funded again at $100 million. They did change the eligibility process. As you might remember, last year, that was set up specifically to allow eligible purchasers to get zero-interest loans, and to help with closing costs for home purchases to a very discreet set of, of employees, and those were law enforcement, fire rescue, first responders, and members of the armed services. The eligibility change in the Hometown Hero this year would basically open it up to any Florida resident who is employed full-time, which is 35 hours a week or more, and is employed by a Florida-based employer. Competitive gap financing for existing projects is a $100 million pot of money that is doing much, much like what we are doing here in Palm Beach County. That is, that is a loan program for builders who are experiencing difficulty in, in finishing their projects, so that will be a competitive loan program for them to finish those projects. And the Live Local Tax Donation Problem, Project is a new corporate tax donation program, so corporations could pay taxes to the Florida Housing Finance Corporation, and then those monies would be moved directly to the sale program.
On the policy side of that housing bill, it creates a couple of new tax exemptions, some mandatory, some discretionary for Board of County Commissioners. On the mandatory side, but basically what it would do is say if you could set aside 70 of those units and those developments for affordable housing, you would have tax exemptions targeted depending on those, those unit numbers, and then up to 80% AMI, and then 81 to 120% AMI. That would be automatic with the bill. Discretionary to the board would be if we looked at some of the low and very low-income housing, so 50% AMI or less, to provide percentages of tax exemptions on those units, depending on how many existed in that, in that particular building. 100% would be 100%, less than that could be 70%, 75% or below. The big issue for local governments is the issue of the preemption that's in here as well, and we'll talk more about some of the other preemptions, but really what this basically does is says local governments, and specifically, like, I'll use Palm Beach County and the unincorporated areas, for example. If we, as a county, have approved a certain level of density anywhere throughout the county on a residential property, then that density could be used on now anything in a commercial, mixed-use, or industrial-zoned area of the county. And from a height perspective, if you're within one mile of a particular height, it would allow you to take that height and move it to that property, or at a minimum, that would be three stories or greater to that height. So, we'll get into a little bit more of that as we do some deeper dives in this particular bill. This bill also prohibits some of the local government rent control under any circumstances, and requires us to publish online some of the inventory of housing that we have available. I know that Administrator Baker has charged Assistant Administrators Miller and Rutter to review this and come back to you to do a deeper dive on the other components of this legislation in the coming weeks and months.
Both the Senate and the House have produced their budgets over the past week. As we look at them, the Senate is $113.6 billion, the House is at $112.9, at a roughly $700 million difference. That's, that's as small as a difference as I can remember in years. So, if they are that close now, we're hoping that this process might proceed a little smoother. Just some highlights, we are definitely not going to go through every item that you'll see on the screen, but a couple of items we want to talk about. Library grants and aids are well-funded. The Florida Job Growth Grant Fund, as you can see, there's some disparities there, that the Senate has it at 75, the, the House has it at 25 million. The ongoing efforts with, efforts with Enterprise Florida and Visit Florida, the House wants to zero those out and eliminate Visit Florida altogether. As you can see, the Senate is funding Enterprise Florida and has basically doubled down on funding for Visit Florida at $80 million. The SCOP funding, which is the Small County Outreach Program funding under Transportation, is well-funded at $94 million, and we are happy about that. As we look at some water and natural resources funding, Everglades Restoration is well-funded at $479 million. The beach program is funded at $106 million. Ordinarily, a $50 million appropriation is full funding for beaches. They did add on extra dollars for hurricane assistance in that area, but we are very happy about that funding. Lake Cooker Showby watershed at $50 million. And you'll see at the bottom, water projects, those are member water projects, so there's a total of $194 million of member projects in the Senate, and $165 million worth of member projects in the House. So, let's take a look at some of those projects. These are your priority projects that you asked us to find appropriations for this year. For Peanut Island Historic Reservation, Preservation and Restoration, we do have $250,000 in the Senate. For Central Palm Beach County Infrastructure Improvement, we have that in the House at $1 million. Commissioner Barnett, we have been, we've been lucky in the past of getting that included in the budget, and we've always had a little bit of a stumbling block getting that through the governor's office, so we're looking forward to working with you to make sure we, we hit that home run to help your district out. Our TD bus passes are in the Senate for a million. Restore reentry, 250 in the House, 375 in the Senate. We'll work to move that Senate number up. Green Cave Phase Two is at $250,000 in the Senate. The Glades Region Infrastructure Improvement at $1.5 million. The Balanced Community Justice Project, that is a community, or a Criminal Justice Commission project that actually bubbled up during your meeting with the Legislative Deligation a few months ago. So, Representative Tay Edmonds got together with CGJAC, they put this request together, so we were able to get funding in the House side of that. The statewide study of community residence zoning, that is a priority of the State Attorney Sober Homes Task Force, so that's an issue where they would like to look statewide, including at Palm Beach County, for best practices on zoning for residential facilities, and try to create a process to make that a statewide issue. The Juvenile Assessment Facility funding is at 5 million in the House, at 10 million in the Senate. That is good for us. That is not just for us, that includes three counties, that's Palm Beach, Hillsborough, and Polk County, to fund their assessment center redos, so we're very happy to have that in there. And the Palm Beach County Rape Crisis Center Butterfly House, that is now a recurring project at $282,000. Some local water issues, our Loxahatchee River Preservation Initiative project was funded fully in the Senate. Our Lakewood Lagoon Initiative was funded fully in the Senate, and also had two of its projects individually funded in the House. The C-51 Reservoir Ongoing Project was funded at $70 million in the Senate. So, the majority of the things you asked us to get funding for, we have, we have, we're either in play on the House or the Senate, we're very happy about that. Some issues that we are still working on that... Some issues that we are still working on that haven't been funded yet, the Everglades Workforce Training Program, we are still working with Department of Economic Opportunity to see if we can make that work. The West Delray Regional Park Boundless Playground, Christian Sacks, we are still working on that. Palm Beach Lakes Bridge Project and Lake Okeechobee Restoration, we are still working on that. And with the Lake Okeechobee Poki Restoration, you'll see later that we're trying to work a federal angle for funding for that as well.
In addition to our priority projects that we have been funding in the legislative budget, we've also been working and supporting a number of projects with a lot of our stakeholders and partners in the community. And over the next few pages, you can see some of those highlights, some of the Palm Beach State College campus. And just so you know, there's actually $3 million in the House for that, along with the $250,000 in the Senate. FAU projects, the Bush Wildlife Sanctuary, and Lagerhead getting some funding as well. On some of the municipal projects, on the other pages, again, our Palm Beach Shores Dredging Project that we're working on around Peanut Island, a million in the House, half a million in the Senate, some good funding for Riviera Beach, Lake Park, Mangonia Park, and then our Field of Dreams that we're working with West Jupiter Community Group, and End Arunda Center with $80,000 in the Senate. Again, some of the North Palm, Delray, Lantana, Boynton and Boca projects, you can see on the following page. We're excited about some of the funding for Belle Glade, $600,000 for that roadway project, and then some money for bridge replacement, as well as with ITID for their canal outfall. We then go on to some Loxahatchee Groves, Palm Springs, South Bay Stormwater Flood Control at $150,000, and Pahokee King Park Memorial Improvements as well. We finally rounded out with some projects with some of our not-for-profits and our community partners. You'll see that we've got money for the Albert Family Jewish Services and some of their access and Health First Aid, as well as the Hanley Foundation, and then the Rise Neighborhood in West Palm Beach with a million. And our last page that we have, no, next to last page on community projects, just wanted to point out on this one, the Palm Beach County Food Bank on their produce processing facility, $400,000, that's currently in there in both the House and the Senate budgets. And then you can see a couple of other child net, Albert Jewish Family Services for some mental health, matched up at $250,000 as well. And then finally, on the last page rounding it out, just some additional money for the JARC with their community works at $425,000 in the House. PBAU with their Center for Financial Literacy, and then some hurricane hardening for the Ark of Palm Beach County's South Campus with about a quarter million and a half a million in the House and Senate respectively. As we go on to some of our priority pieces of policy legislation, this next page, we wanted to just talk about some of the preemption issues that we've been dealing with. This is by all means not all of them, but a couple that we just wanted to share with you. The vacation rentals one actually is one that would actually be pretty good for us. This would allow us to do certain types of registries and allow us to charge fees, and also to pull back on some of those registry notifications if folks were not complying with those laws. That local ordinance one, 170, that's the one that the Senate President sort of calls the preemption bill, the end preemptions, at least in her mind, and it basically would require business impact estimates if Boards of County Commissioners or city commissions put forward ordinance changes to determine what those impacts would be on those businesses. So that's passed the Senate and currently pending in the House. Under public instruction on the local preferences, in the Senate bill, we were able to amend out language that would have required us, if we just use local dollars, to eliminate any local preferences. That language is still in the House bill, but again, we're going to be monitoring that as well. Again, residential building permits, temporary commercial kitchens, a lot of preemptions with us, and some expediting of permitting that they want to require of us. Those are sort of temporarily halted for the moment, but they could continue moving at any time, but we've had our eye on that. And then residential tenancies at the end, that's one that would effectively eliminate our law that we did locally on the 60-day notification on the termination of leases. Under this bill, it would increase that on the state statute side from 15 to 30 days for those month-to-months, but locally, we wouldn't be able to do those kinds of ordinances any longer.
Some of your other priorities is alternative mobility funding. This is the mobility bill in the House and Senate. It's only had, it had two hearings in the House, it's gone nowhere in the Senate. It is technically on life support, don't expect that to move any further in the House. The Senate Bill 604 Sovereign Immunity, our current limits on sovereign immunity lawsuits are $200,000 a person and $300,000 per event. There are competing bills in the House and Senate to increase those numbers, which haven't been raised in years. The Senate is looking to increase those numbers to 400,000 and 600,000. The House is looking to increase those numbers to 2.5 million and 5 million. Needless to say, we are doing our best to encourage the Senate bill to move forward, but also to include a CPI index tab to that, so that we don't have to address this every 10 years. It can kind of move up as the CPI moves up as well. Senate Bill 1646 Airport Accountability, that is the Laura Beebe Board Meeting Appearance Reduction Act. It is being heard in the Senate Transportation Committee this morning, actually right now. It has already been heard twice in the House in two committees, it passed unanimously both times. We are getting some Senate pushback on that bill. The author of that bill, back in the House days, is now in the Senate. He hasn't been too willing to work with us. That has not stopped us, however, from moving along in that, so we continue to work on that bill. Two rural areas of opportunity bills, 1628 and 1664. 1628, for rural areas of opportunity, this says the state can expend dollars for locals for estimated costs, not just for reimbursements of projects they've already done. That's good. And then 1664, that's the Maine Department of Economic Opportunity Bill. So that's where, on the rural infrastructure fund dollars, they're saying, "Well, we can use that for infrastructure use, and that's for demucking, especially in our Glades area, which is so costly out there." So those are moving forward. That also includes language to tighten up the Everglades Workforce Training Program, to see if we can focus those dollars in areas in the Glades or around the lake. Vehicle for hire licenses, this bill is basically a reciprocity bill, or saying if you have a vehicle for license in one county, it is reciprocal in any other county, same with a local municipality, it would do that. But it also prohibits an airport from requiring a person to obtain an additional license when they have a license somewhere else. Well, that's a concern for our airport. Number one, it's a financial concern, as you know, is a very delicate balance of revenue and finance at the airport, so that could be a financial hit. But just implementation-wise, we're trying to work with the sponsor to try to figure out how they would even implement that, especially when some of those airport drivers have per-trip fees. So we are expecting a Senate amendment on that in the next couple of days, hoping to address some of our concerns, but we are moving forward on that. Senate Bill 640 Tourist Development Taxes, this is the yearly bill that would allow fiscally constrained smaller counties to use some of their bed tax money for other issues. They just like to kind of expand the use of those dollars. You have told us that we would not like to expand the use of those dollars, we'd like to keep those for what they are. So that bill has not been heard in either the House or the Senate, so it's theoretically dead. The other Tourism Development Tax Bill that has kind of popped up after the Visit Florida issue in the House is 705.3, so that bill popped up last week. So it would do a number of things for tourist development taxes. Number one, it would sunset every tourist development tax as of July 2028. It would require, if that tax was re-implemented, it would have a levy of up to six years before we'd have to go do that again. It would require 60% voter approval for implementation of that tax, and it also would require us to remit back to the state 5% of the taxes that we collect to fully fund Visit Florida, because that would prohibit state funding to fund Visit Florida. So that 5% tax from us to Visit Florida would last for a three-year period, and then it would be technically up to the Board of County Commissioners to decide whether to continue to remit that. It did pass 11 to 3 in the House Ways and Means Committee the other day. There is no such bill currently in the Senate. I will tell you, watching the committee vote on that, although it does sound like 11 to 3 was a pretty spectacular victory, there was a lot of visual nose-holding by members during that vote. So we will see how that progresses. Senate Bill 994 is the Public Nuisance Bill. Much like yourselves, this is the bill sponsored by Representative Mike Caruso that prohibits littering onto private property, and it also would prohibit projecting an image onto a building without consent of that building's owners. So that bill is also moving through the House and through the Senate. In the House, it's in its final stop. Bill 210 is the State Attorney Addiction Recovery Task Force Priority Bill. So that does a couple of things that would prohibit certain substances in residential facilities used for substance abuse, and also it just addresses some of the trespassing issues that they had brought to us. And that bill, once again, is being brought by Representative Caruso and Gail Harrow. They are always our saviors on the substance abuse issue list. Senate Bill 216 and 518, those are public records exemptions, one for county attorneys on their personal identifying and location information, as well as the location information of their spouses and children. 518 is an exemption from public records for records pertaining to persons with legal custody of an animal that they got of an animal shelter. Regrettably, both of those bills were not heard in the House, and those House committees are no longer meeting, so those bills will not be going forward. Senate Bill 798 is the Solid Waste Management Bill. This is a rather large bill that would prohibit municipalities and counties from prohibiting or unreasonably restraining private entities from providing recycling or solid waste management services to certain properties. Our solid waste authority was first and foremost in putting their opposition to this. That continues. I am listing this bill currently as mostly dead. It is in its last committee in the House, but it has not yet even been heard in the Senate, and it goes to the Environment and Natural Resources Committee. They're not scheduled to meet this week, they're not scheduled to meet next week, so it's on life support at very best. In reviewing that bill, it also brought to our attention Senate Bill 1472, which is the Organic Material Bill. So this bill would add activities related to organic material, collection, storage, and processing, and distribution to the types of farms' operations that are protected under the Florida Right to Farm Act. So it would extend that Right to Farm Act into organic material collection. So the bill defines the term "organic material" to mean vegetative matter resulting from landscaping maintenance or land-clearing operations, including materials such as tree and shrub termites, grass clippings, palm fronds, trees, and tree stumps, and associated rocks and soils. The House, in its passing during its first committee stop, added language that classified the collection, storage, processing, distribution of organic material products as a bona fide farm operation. That is a bill that is currently in community affairs. It will go to rules, so it has two more stops in the Senate, it has two more stops in the House. That is a bill that we are monitoring closely. Senate Bill 256, Employee Organizations Representing Public Employees, this is the big union bill. There is a portion of that union bill that was put forth by legislative leadership and the governor that might have inadvertently hurt some of our Palm Tran, or some of our federal transit administration funding. Our Palm Tran union folks came to us, they also came to some of our senators, told them of those concerns about the possibility of not being able to receive FTA funds if this was in place. The Senate was very receptive to that, so on the floor of the House last week before they passed that out, they did include a waiver under that condition that would protect those FTA funds from coming to the county. 1240 is the Land and Water Management Bill at the very beginning of session. There was a very large bill that said, "We want to prohibit counties and municipalities from adopting laws, regulations, rules, or policies relating to water quality, water quantity, pollution control, pollutant discharge, prevention or removal of wetlands, and preempting everything to the state." It was a rather wild and very large bill. And looking at the genesis of that bill, I think we shared that with the mayor, it was a sort of a local dispute. This was filed to be sort of a warning shot over a certain county. Its bill has been neither heard in the Senate or the House, it is effectively dead. And then finally, Senate Bill 750, the shell of this bill was filed last week. The bill, basically, it said, it was just used as a placeholder for a larger elections bill, which we expected to come out. That bill came out yesterday. The House election bill did not address the resign-to-run issue for the governor, but it did address a number of other items, including prohibiting first-time voters from voting by mail, requiring candidates to file campaign financial reports on a quarterly basis instead of a monthly basis. Campaign finance reporting requirements for local offices would also be preempted to the state. It would require incumbent candidates to be identified on a ballot by putting the word incumbent next to their name, something that is only currently mandated if two or more candidates in the same race have the same or similar names. It would require election officials tasked with verifying signatures to undergo more training. It provides stricter rules for third-party voter registration groups, requiring them to register with the state while boosting penalties for violations. It would also change how candidates accept contributions from political parties, and it would revise the process for verifying signatures on petition initiatives, and update the process for post-election audits of voting machines. So this language came forth yesterday, I'm sorry, this was in the Senate, so it's Senate Bill 750. It is being heard in its first committee of reference, currently its only committee of reference, Senate Elections and Ethics Today at 2:00 p.m. So currently, there is no House companion filed for that bill. And finally, some local bills that are moving through the committees, the Boca Raton Airport Authority Bill, that just updated their, codified kind of their act, updated, gave them a pay increase. That bill is sponsored by Representative Gossis Seidman, and it is in its final stop in the House. The Jupiter Inlet District Codification and Pay Increase Bill, that has two more stops, one at Ways and Means, and one in State Affairs in the House. Those committees are still meeting, so we would expect that to move through. The Village of Wellington, that was a land transfer between two special districts, that did pass on the floor of the House last week, so that is completed. The Village of Loxahatchee Bill, that is their municipal charter bill, that was scheduled for three committees in the House and has not yet been heard. The first committee of reference for that bill no longer meets, so that bill is effectively dead for this session. Before we move on to some of our federal issues, I do want to recognize the other members of the team who are not sitting with us. Victoria Nolan from the Legislative Delegation, the executive director there, Janaya Mercado, our delegation aide with the delegation and with Legislative Affairs. And none of the facts that we just gave to you today would be able to be presented without the hard work and diligence of our new legislative director, Casey Denny. You got to meet Casey during our first week up at Palm Beach County days. You know, I think we all realized we were hoping to hire an all-star, and what we got was an absolute rock star. So she is with us in spirit, she's stuck in a committee room right now, hopefully watching on her iPhone, but she is doing an absolutely fantastic job for us and for you in Tallahassee.
As we take a look at the federal earmark requests, you will notice that some of these align with a lot of the things that we are requesting on the state side. This is a very tough process when you're going through the federal earmarks. Each congressional member are looking at approximately 15 requests throughout their district, and we were able to put in requests through the four of our congressional members. Starting with Representative Brian Mass, we request for Peanut Island Coast Guard Facilities and Kennedy Presidential Bunker Restoration, 1.5 million. Congresswoman Lois Frankel, the Green Cave Phase Two, 2 million. Representative Sheila Sheffler-Schubkormick, we did two requests with her, the workforce affordable house development, which you guys are familiar with, this will help us leverage dollars that the Board has allocated for in the past, the sales tax, the bond funding, we're looking at 2.2 million for that. The Lake O-Pahokee Shoreline Restoration, about 600,000. And with Representative Jarrett Mozzawett, we are requesting funding for Palm Tran Bus Shelter Expansion. As you have looked around throughout the district, you would notice that a lot of our bus shelters are aging, they're about 15 years old and starting They're about 15 years old and starting to wear and tear, so we want to make restorations to those and for more advanced, more modern, more up-to-date shelters, and we're looking at about 1 million for that. And for Palm Tran e-vehicle charging, as we move more into electrification throughout the county, this is something that will be needed also for electric buses and for cars that Palm Tran will be using for support and for our drivers.
So that is just the tip of the iceberg of some of the things that we're working on during this legislative session on behalf. Mayor, Commissioners, thank you for your indulgence. That concludes our update.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Marino, you're recognized.
Thank you. Todd, I don't know where to bring this up, so I'm going to bring it up here. I would actually like a letter of support for the town of Palm Beach Shores for their shul dredging project. I know it's a partnership. We've done so much with them and the permitting process is, you know, something the county has right now that we're trying to transfer over, so I think any support we could give them, I'd appreciate it. So that would actually be board direction, or how would you like me to handle that?
That's fine. I mean, if the board has no objection to that, we'd be happy to draft that letter. We've been working closely with the town and their team in Tallahassee, so we'll get that out. We can get that out today for you.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Sacks, you're recognized.
Thank you. You guys are doing an amazing job. Oh, thank you. It's not easy up there. A couple, a couple of things. Will we get an explanation as to the Live Local bill? I guess it's not, is it a law yet? Is it, or when does it, when does it go into effect? May or July, October?
I think, I believe it's in the end of July is when it goes into effect.
Okay, good. I need to understand what ramifications it has to Palm Beach County, to our bond issuance of funds for affordable housing, and also with regard to what lands, like, I know it's commercial, residential, and industrial. Does it include agricultural or what types of different? I just need sort of a side-by-side of what exactly this means to us in terms of our needs for affordable housing and workforce housing, and what it means to us for our bond that we already passed and for the monies that are there at some point, if you could provide that to all of us. And then, of course, I had put in a request through Senator Berman on the Village of Valor, which is a, an idea put out by our county administrator, which is an excellent idea for a community, for veterans who are homeless or who need services to have there within this Village of Valor. And I was wondering if we had any, any information on that.
Vice Mayor, to your first point, just to clarify, that bill goes into effect July 1 of 2023, Senate Bill 102. And I might have glossed over this quickly, but Administrator Baker has charged Assistant Administrators Rutter and Miller, who are actually going to be meeting this week on that legislation. They will be putting together some of those components exactly as you expressed and bringing that back to the board for a workshop with you, so that the board is very familiar with the workings of that new legislation.
As far as that particular project, I don't see it in the budget. However, it doesn't mean it's not there. I will check with Senator Berman's office and see if that might be included in something else.
Excellent, I appreciate it. And then, there's so many things to discuss, but in terms of expediency, just one other is the playground for, they call it the boundless playground, for those who have intellectual and physical disabilities. That is, is one of our requests, but it doesn't have legs, or how is it moving here?
Yeah, so right now, that one is not funded in either the House or the Senate budget. Typically, a lot of those projects are funded, and parks projects are funded through the FERDA program, which is a smaller allocation of grant funds. We asked for a larger number, about $1 million for that. We've got a couple of strategies on how we think we might still be able to get some funding for that in there, and we're looking forward to working with you on that with us. I think that we've got a couple of ideas that we wanted to share with you, and we can work through that the next couple of weeks.
I'll be going up there, so maybe I'll push it a little bit more. And then, one last thing. Do you think Sinai Dye will be as scheduled, since the two budgets are so close?
You know, at the pace they're going with the budget right now, you know, the budget's on the floor of the House today for final passage out of the House. Now, that still has to be reconciled between the chambers. Typically, that, I mean, it's, it's set up, you know, midway through session, so it just is a question of what the will of the legislature is on those negotiations and what other larger issues are still remaining between the chambers. I mean, we talked about Visit Florida, we talked about Enterprise Florida, we spoke about the new elections legislation. I mean, those are the kinds of things that start bubbling up, and we'll see. But, yeah, I mean, the sooner they get out of session, the better sometimes, so I'm hoping that they get into reconciliation for that, but oftentimes, that usually happens the last, you know, weekend before session ends, so.
What do they say? These are the most dangerous days for dogs and men in the state of Florida.
I think my prediction is they will absolutely end on time. I feel pretty certain about that.
It seems like it. Thank you very much for all you do. Thank you.
We have a comment card.
Heather Andrews, thank you for waiting so patiently.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Again, my name's Heather Andrews, and I'm here today on behalf of Discover the Palm Beaches, and I just wanted to take a minute to thank Mayor Weiss, as well as all of you on the County Commission, County Administrator Baker, as well as the County Legislative Team for your unwavering support of the hospitality and tourism community, especially Vice Mayor Sacks, as she chairs the Tourist Development Council Board. I just wanted to reiterate some of the things that Mr. Chase had mentioned about House Bill 7053. This bill that has been put forth is the biggest attack on the hospitality and tourism industry ever in the state of Florida, and I just wanted to reinforce today that the public-private partnerships that exist in the state of Florida with the tourist development tax and Visit Florida are some of the best relationships that exist. And this attack on the tourist development tax here within our industry to take our monies and put it at the state level and really handcuff Visit Florida altogether is really devastating to our communities at a state level. Not only, as Ed said, would 5% of our tourist development tax go to the state, then the tax that is then collected, less than 25% of those dollars would be used in any manner to help support the largest tourism districts in the state of Florida. So this is absolutely devastating. So we're going to continue to do all that we can to help support our friends, not just here in Palm Beach County, but in the state. This is 100,000 people in our community, over $10 billion economic impact, and really, we can't lose any of those dollars. We have to keep our momentum going with the tourist development tax that we are collecting today to do the work that we can to continue to welcome over 9 million visitors to our destination just last year alone. So, again, we support you and thank you for your support of the tourism industry overall. You have helped make this a part of your legislative priorities for the year, and that's extremely important to us for that support. Again, this bill will next be heard next week on April 12 in the Ways and Means Committee. We have several Palm Beach County representatives that sit on that committee. We'll be doing our best to educate them on, you know, the importance of trying to push down this bill and make sure that it does not come into the sunlight, because, again, it affects us, it affects the viability of how Visit Florida can operate, and will basically dismantle them within less than two years. So, again, we thank you all. We thank you to the legislative team, and again, to County Administrator Baker for all of your support of the hospitality and tourism industry here in Palm Beach County.
Vice Mayor, you're recognized.
I have a question, if you could come on back. What advocates is the organization using? I know that we have a great advocacy team here with our lobbyists, but I'm sure that you're using other advocates as well.
Yes, we're really working with Destinations Florida, so they are the Association of Destination Marketing Organizations. They have a lobbyist, Matt Forrest. We also have the support of the Florida Restaurant and Lodging Association, the Attractions Association, the Florida Association of Chambers. So there is a lot of help and support in trying to push down 7053, so we're out there, we're using our voices, and again, as well as our local advocates here.
Thank you very much. I have a question for, for our team on this issue. Does it look like this thing is going to pass? It's got such great support with the restaurants, with the destinations, with, you know, with all the recreation. You're smiling at me, Ed. I know this is not a good thing, but what, what does it look like? This is a big issue.
Well, we always appreciate being asked to predict legislative intent, so thank you for throwing that our way.
I could read it in your face. Read it in your face.
This, I, this bill is done in a House effort to continue to whittle away at Visit Florida. I think that's all, it's all in the intent on this issue. You know, I don't think realistically this is a feasible bill, once the phrase "local tax increase" gets tossed around a little bit. Again, you know, just looking at the, looking at the faces of the members who voted for this bill, there was, there was visual unease moving this bill through, so if that is any consolation, we can go with that.
Okay, very good. Good luck on that, and we'll see. I think what we all need to do also is to lobby our local legislators, especially if they're on that committee, and we will. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Okay, well, I have a couple of questions. Just in preparing for the presentation on the Live Local bill, I'd also like to add in, understanding the state tax exemptions and how those would, would work and be applied. You didn't talk about the statewide term limits for county commissioners. Not that it impacts us directly, but it impacts us as a state. As we know, we would potentially lose our ability to have any kind of leadership nationally in any organization from the state of Florida, because most other jurisdictions are not under term limits, and so we would, we depend on our friends and neighbors from other counties to represent our interests, and I can see that that, that would disappear if that. So I don't, I don't know if you guys are watching that at all? I mean, I.
We are. That is Senator Blazin Gogli's bill in the, in the Senate, and what that would effectively do is it would override any charter in the state of Florida in regards to term limits for county commissioners and would create an eight-year term limit for those commissioners, primarily the small county coalition. And when we've been on our lobbying calls with our team and with others, you know, they've been weighing in heavily on that piece of legislation. A lot of your smaller counties around the state, you know, don't have those term limits, but, you know.
And it's, it's also a fact top-two priority, so they are on this on a regular basis.
And then, on, you gave the Senate bill number for it, but I've been following HB1361, which is that organic waste, and just to understand the potential, and I believe unintended consequences, is that somebody could dump a pile of vegetative waste on their front yard, claim an ag exemption, and it could just either sit there, they could turn it into a mulching and chipping facility in neighborhoods, and that would totally exempt local governments from, because under the Right to Farm bill would prohibit local governments from any kind of oversight or anything and creating a really noxious environment for neighbors. And I know, I don't believe that was the intent, but that's based on the way the current bill is written. That's a potential reality, and I think, and I'm glad you guys are watching it now, because I'm very concerned about it, and I'm sure everybody on this board is concerned about it.
Yeah, Mayor, we are reviewing that, monitoring that. I know that a lot of the ag interests as well are looking at that, too. I mean, anytime you get in there into the Right to Farm bill and you open up that statute, you know, the radars go off and the antennas go up amongst, you know, a lot of folks in the industry. So I think, you know, it's been through one committee on both sides of the House and the Senate, and oftentimes, you know, that's when folks kind of engage a little bit, and I know on the industry side, I mean, it certainly has some of those broad, it has various, some broad implications, so they may be trying to work with the sponsors to see if there are some ways to fine-tune that at all, but we'll stay in communication with them and provide you some additional updates as that, you know, continues on through the process, so.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Woodward, you're recognized.
Thank you. Yes, it was brought to my attention yesterday, and I see it on here, about Enterprise Florida. It seems very similar to what's happening with the tourism stuff. Can you tell me where that stands? I know it's similar in the House. Where are we on that?
We, at your direction, we support full funding for Enterprise Florida as well as Visit Florida, so we are working as best we can to keep those Senate budget numbers where they are, if not higher than that. You know, this is, there, as our former members of the House and Senate on the day as can tell you, there, there are always a few items that kind of are held up to the very end of session that are the last-minute things to be negotiated before the budget is approved and you cross the finish line. You know, my guess is this is going to be one of those items.
There is a pending, aside from the budget, you know, the House has no funding in there for it, the Senate has $12 million. A piece of legislation that's out there in the House is looking to take Enterprise Florida and basically put it underneath DEO, the Department of Economic Opportunity. So that's the legislative side of it that sort of matches with the budget component of it, but again, I look at this as being one of those issues at the end of session where leadership on both sides, you know, tends to negotiate some of these things out. There's been a lot of pushback over the years when it came to changing Enterprise Florida and Visit Florida by, you know, legislative leadership, even at the highest levels. And, and so, you know, Visit Florida, I think, has done pretty well in terms of their work over the last couple of years to prove their value to the legislature, but again, you know, these issues bubble up and we'll see, but we've got a marker on that legislation and the appropriation, so we'll, we'll remain vigilant on that.
Any other questions or comments from the board? If not, we could have a motion to receive and file? We have a motion from Commissioner Marino, a second by the Vice Mayor. Any further discussion? All in favor, all opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. Thank you. All right, moving on to Item 6A, Commission District Appointments. And let me start, and we'll start down at District 6 today. Commissioner Baxter, do you have any district appointments?
I do. I have, I would, I move to appoint Lisa Reviss to the Zoning Commission and reappoint, do them both at the same time, John R. Smith to the Infrastructure Certax Independent Citizen Oversight Committee.
We have, we have a motion by Commissioner Baxter and a second by Commissioner Bernard. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, all opposed, that motion carries seven to zero. Thank you very much. Commissioner Bernard, you're recognized.
None, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Sacks, you're recognized. Thank you. Commissioner Marino, you're recognized.
Thank you. I have two. I'd like to appoint Mr. Timothy Stapleton to the Infrastructure Certax, this is a long one, Independent Citizens Oversight Committee, and I would also like to appoint Ms. Sasha Klein to the Advisory Commission on Women.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Marino, a second by Commissioner Woodward. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, all opposed, that motion carries seven to zero. Okay, Commissioner Woodward, you're recognized.
Okay, yes, I have two. I'd like to reappoint Frank Lewis to the Certax Committee, and I reappoint James Noe to the Boca Raton Airport Authority.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Woodward, a second by Commissioner Marino, all in favor, all opposed, that motion carries seven to zero. Commissioner Barnett, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have two appointments. Julio Fuentes to the Infrastructure Certax Committee and Antonio Araho Jr. to Business Development Board.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Barnett, a second by the Vice Mayor. All in favor, all opposed, that motion carries seven to zero. And I have one appointment. I would like to appoint Virginia Savietto to the Library Advisory Board.
Nice.
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
And we have a second by Commissioner Bernard, all in favor, all opposed. I guess I should have had you do this.
That's okay.
For me.
I just did it. We did.
Okay, all right. That motion carries seven to zero. Thank you very much. I'll fix that, we'll get that out right next time.
I apologize. I have, I have one. I do have a district appointment. I'd like to reappoint Cheryl Budd to the Boca Raton Airport Authority.
We have a motion by Vice Mayor Sacks, a second by Commissioner Bernard, all in favor, all opposed, that motion carries seven to zero. Commissioner Bernard, you're recognized.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to reappoint Kimberly Weston-Mehu to the Infrastructure Committee.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Bernard, a second by the Vice Mayor. All in favor, all opposed, that motion carries seven to zero. Okay, we're on to Item 7A1, Administrator Comments, and would be a motion to receive and file, is that what you're looking for?
Yes, I am looking for receiving and file.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Marino, a second by the Vice Mayor. All in favor, all opposed, that motion carries seven to zero. County Attorney.
I'm sorry, one last thing, which I just got hot off the press.
Uh-oh. Something, uh, this, uh-oh. Something, uh, this, uh-oh.
Excellent news.
Oh, excellent news, okay.
Excellent news. I had the pleasure of going to see the rating agencies in New York along with staff. They, just a phenomenal job with our debt service manager, along with Sherri Brown and Lisa, and Lisa as the Budget Director, and Mark as our Debt Service Manager, and also our Financial Advisor. And so, we went to all three rating agencies. We wanted to ensure that as we go out for bonds, that we were solid. We put together a very good presentation on the status of where we are, what we're doing, going to the future with this board, and I just got hot off the press. They will all be final, they were issued, for the most part, on March 31st. We just got them. So we are able to keep our AAA bond rating, not only for GO bonds from Moody's, as well as S&amp;P, but Fitch also maintained, and these again are our non-avalorum bonds. So it is kind of unheard of for counties to have AAA-rated, non-avalorum bonds. We've got it with our GO bonds. But in this case, we remain with the double A with Fitch, but they, they're kind of, but they were very impressed with your leadership and the direction that this, this county is moving in. They thought we were in very good hands, so they actually put it in writing, so we are extremely excited on that issue.
Congratulations to everybody.
Thank you.
Good news. Golf clap. Okay. And moving on, County Attorney.
No comments.
All right. And then moving on to Commissioner Comments, and we will start on my far left, and that's going to be Commissioner Barnett.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Commissioners, you may remember, last month, we had a discussion at the beginning of the meeting with regards to appointments by the Economic Council to five positions on the Criminal Justice Commission, which I happen to serve on as the Commission Representative. I also represent a district that is majority Hispanic, so it's important to me, and I made my opinion very clear that we need to have at least one, preferably many more Hispanic representatives on the Criminal Justice Commission, so their voices could be heard as well. I've been discussing with the President of, the President of the Economic Council, Ms. Michelle Jacobs, who's here today and is going to be speaking shortly, about the Economic Council's extensive efforts to recruit a number of qualified Hispanic candidates to fill that fifth vacancy in their list of nominations that were considered last month but postponed at this time. I, I think, I feel comfortable with Michelle Jacobs and the Economic Council's efforts to meet this call by the Board to diversify the Criminal Justice Commission, which is way long overdue. And I really, I want to thank you, Michelle, and the Economic Council for your efforts. I understand that you're still in the process of interviewing these candidates, and hopefully we'll have somebody chosen for that fifth spot among the five Hispanic qualified candidates that you're looking at now. With those assurances, I would like to ask the Board, if there's no objection, to direct staff to bring back the nominees, the four new appointees, as well as the two reappointments, Rachel Dosical, and I don't remember the other one. Would you come up to the podium, please, and share a little bit? Thank you very much.
Lauren Whitstone.
Lauren Whitstone.
Sure. Thank you so much, Commissioner. It's nice to see you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, County Administrator Baker. I really appreciate you taking a few minutes to bring this back up again. The Economic Council takes the 10 board seats that we have on the Criminal Justice Commission, and all of the different boards that we've created and we have seats on very seriously. We created a new process over the last year to ensure that we have the best candidates that serve the Economic Council as our appointees. In the fall, we had five seats that were open. We brought forward five names. We were asked if we could help with diversity on the Criminal Justice Commission Board, of which we're, we're doing our very best to do, but recognize that we hold 10 of the 32 seats. So there are 22 other seats that can also help with that level of diversity, as well as you have the option, of course, to expand that board, so, if you so choose. However, we want to be collaborative in the goals of creating diversity on the CJC. So we have brought forward to you, we do have four current appointments that we hope you will approve, nominees that you will approve. Of those, the CEO of Career Source, which was asked of us, we interviewed and, and have, think that she would do a great job, as well as the CEO of the Healthcare District. We do have a black African American, we were asked to provide someone from the Black Chamber, and that's Ernie Ellison, so we hope you will approve him. And then our fourth nominee currently is Michelle Suskow, who has incredible experience, past Florida Bar Chair, who will serve very, very well on this board. We do have one vacant seat, as the Commissioner said, and we've been asked to fill that with a Hispanic. While I cannot 100% guarantee anything, I will tell you that right now, we have five candidates, and those are the only five people we're talking to, so I feel pretty confident in saying that we will be able to provide you with a Hispanic nominee. However, we have a, an internal process that we have to go through, asking if any of our members want to serve on our behalf, and so that's what's been the small delay. I would hate for the four people that are waiting to be appointed and that are ready to serve to continue to be in limbo, because we're waiting for this fifth seat. So, as the Commissioner said, we have four people ready to go. We also have two reappointments, of which one of those reappointments is going to be the incoming Board Chair. So our hope is that you would bring this back at your next meeting to approve at least those six people, with the notion, knowing that very quickly after, we will have that, that last vacancy, we will have a nominee to you.
All right. Thank you. All right, so Commissioner Barnett, is, is there anyone who objects to Commissioner Barnett's request? Seeing none, so, so be the, the staff should be directed. Thank you, sir. Anything else?
No, sir, nothing else.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Woodward, you're recognized.
Yes, thank you. I'm not very versed with Robert's rules, but I would actually like to make a motion to reconsider our earlier motion about staffing. During our break, I discussed with Administrator and Assistant Administrator about the dollar amount in the budget, because I know several of us have openings, and the $40,000 was an annual, and we're at the halfway point of the year at this point, so if we were to make this active now, moving forward, we're talking six months, and those of us who are, would be hiring new people, it's actually lower, so we would be below budget, just because several of us have openings of long-term employees. And as a board, overall, we would not be going over budget together. I know each of us have our own budgets that we have to, you know, abide by, but the seven of us together will be under budget, just because of staffing changes that have been made. So if I could make the request for us to be able to have three assistants, starting here in April, instead of pushing this off until October, because I know I have an opening, and I'm, you know, it's, it would be important to me to be able to have three assistants. If we could just discuss that, please.
Okay, so, let me, let me just sort of try and put this, so what your, is, you want to give Board direction to have staff bring back an item, so that we can vote on it in the next, at the next meeting, so it'll be in two weeks?
Did you put a motion forward? Or did she was giving staff direct? She made a motion.
A motion to reconsider, is it?
And I seconded it.
Motion to reconsider.
Right. A motion to reconsider, and then we'd have to make a motion to-
I gotta go to the bathroom. I gotta go to the bathroom. Okay, she's gonna take over.
Okay, okay. Here we go. So when a, when a, a motion has already been, we had a five-to-two vote, so anybody who is on the favorable vote can, can put another motion to reconsider that motion and second it. So, with that in mind, you're gonna hold off on your second.
Okay.
Okay? And you have a motion that you would like for the Board to consider a, an increase in the three staff positions that are open today at the next board meeting? Is that, is that, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, good. Do we, Commissioner Baker, do you have something to do?
Administrator, she's asking for the secretary position to be elevated to a Commissioner aide.
Yes.
And if that is the Board's direction, then we will need to change the resolution, bring that up, and we can bring that back at our next regular board meeting.
Is that correct, Commissioner? Okay, good. Do we have a second for that? We do. Commissioner Marino?
Commissioner-
And, no, no, excuse me. Excuse me. We can't redo a motion unless, I believe, according to Robert's rule of order, don't worry, it'll be all right. It'll be all right, because we got a second. But I don't believe that you can reconsider a motion that's already been passed unless you are on the approval of that. So we have a five-to-two vote on the previous one, and that's why.
I have a question.
Pardon me?
Is it the same vote, though?
It's, don't worry about it, it's already been seconded. I just wanted to, I want the procedures to go correctly. Yes, turn it.
Yeah, under the county's procedure, the maker of the motion has to be on the prevailing side. There's not a requirement as to the second or-
Okay.
One way or the other.
Okay, so we have a second, so it's, so the record is clear. We have a second by Commissioner Baxter, and all those in favor of this motion. Is there anybody opposed to the motion? Very good. So it passes six with one absent at this time. Very good. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Any other comments?
I do have one other. I'm requesting approval for an off-site proclamation declaring April 25th, 2023 as Parental Awareness Day.
Very good. Thank you very much. We have a second. It passes six to zero. Unanimous.
Thank you. And my last comment, FAU Owls, good job making it to the final four, and U-Miami, final four. We are, we're heartbreaking that was it, but good job, and I look forward to next year.
Very good. And I know you have a seven to zero on that, no matter what. Thank you so much. I'm gonna pass the gavel now to Mayor Weiss.
Thank you. Sorry about that. All right. Commissioner Marino.
Thank you. I have two off-site requests for proclamations. One would be recognizing the 15th anniversary of Bellas Angels, Inc. The proclamation would be off-site, and the other off-site proclamation would be declaring May 21 through 27, 2023 as Emergency Medical Services Week.
Okay. We have a, a request by, and a motion by Commissioner Marino, a second by Vice Mayor Sacks. All in favor, all oppose, that carries seven to zero.
Thank you, and I would be remiss if I didn't congratulate my alma mater, the University of Connecticut, for winning the final four. I was, I was actually hoping to show up with a split jersey that was UConn on one side and FAU, sorry about Miami, you know, on the other side, but I do, I'm very proud of our Florida teams, and I do want to, again, congratulate the University of Connecticut. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Vice Mayor Sacks.
Thank you very much, and I'd like to congratulate my alma mater for making the final four, University of Miami Hurricanes. Very proud of them. Who would have known that, that our two Florida teams were there at the very, very final, and it's exciting, and darn that Connecticut, I tell you, they took it away. But that's okay, because we have three of us here representing all the three different teams. Did you want me to do?
Yeah, can you do those requests?
Sure. Of course. And on behalf of Mayor Weiss, I'd like to request approval for an off-site proclamation declaring April 9th to the 15th, 2023, as Palm Beach County Public Safety Telecommunications Week. It would be dated, this off-site would be dated April 6th, 2023. Do I have a second?
You gotta go, if you can do all three of them.
Okay, I'm gonna do this, second and the third. Also, on behalf of the Mayor, I would like to request approval for an off-site proclamation declaring April 23, 29, 2023 as National Crime Victims Rights Week. The off-site would be dated April 24th, 2023, and going to the third, is requesting approval for an off-site proclamation declaring April 2023 as Child Abuse Prevention and Volunteer Appreciation Month. Do I have a second?
Second. We have a second. Okay. Thank you. All in favor, all oppose, that motion carries seven to zero. Thank you very much.
Okay, very good. Going on to Vice Mayor Sacks, I have, I want to just note and thank our Engineering Department, because for the last couple of weeks, I've been going to different HOAs in my district with regard to the issues with the widening of Lions Road, that have impacted so many folks along the Lions Road, from Clipmore Road all the way up to Boynton Beach Road. And I want to thank our engineering staff, and I want to name them, rather than just say the staff, our Chief Engineer, David Ricks, Albert Hoffman, Director of Construction Coordination, Kathleen Pharoah, Director of Roadway Production, Rashim Awad, Manager of Traffic Engineering Operations, and of course, Mo. They stand with me as each HOA, and there was a minimum of 200 people at each one, questioned why is it taking so long to widen Lions Road? And, and to have the engineers with me was a tremendous help, because they were able to describe in their own engineering way why it has taken so long, but why, when it is done, it will be done right. And so, it was, I want to thank them. After a long day at work, they come out at night and, and, and help me with, with my constituents, and of course, also with me was Ed Saul, and Janet Agulhas, and Vivian Leva, who also come out with me every night and do these, these issues with the constituents, and I just want to thank them, recognize them, and, and hopeful we've got more to go to. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor, for the time.
Thank you. Commissioner Bernard, you're recognized.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I forgot to do another appointment, so I'd like to make a motion to appoint Albert Johnson to the Aviation and Airports Advisory Board.
We have a motion by Commissioner Bernard, a second by Vice Mayor Sacks. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, all oppose, that motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. This evening, the Engineering Public Works Department will do a, a public meeting for residents of District Seven, specifically residents in West Palm Beach, which is, the purpose of the meeting is for the Australian Avenue Drainage Improvements from Banyan Boulevard to 45th Street. So for the residents who are, who live in that area, the public meeting will be at Gaines Park from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. And Gaines Park Community Center is located at 1501 North Australian Avenue in West Palm Beach, Florida, 33401. Thank you, Mr. Sir.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Baxter, you're recognized.
Thank you. I just want to remind everyone that the Sweet Corn Fiesta will be at Yesteryore Village on April 23rd.
Let me make a note.
Look forward to seeing you there.
Thank you.
Gotta get my sweet corn on.
Oh, yeah.
All right. Thank you very much. Before I make my comments, I, one thing, I'm requesting Board support that I may act as the Board Liaison to the Lantana Airport meetings, and then report back to the Board. Is that, is there any? Okay. Okay, so, without objection. Thank you. All right. Couple of things. First off, this past Saturday, the Annual Mayor's Ball, which really shouldn't be called the Mayor's Ball, is really a ball or an event to help raise money for our homeless, for the efforts for our home, home, the groups that are providing services for our homeless residents here in Palm Beach County, and, and I have to say, the support that was given is so much appreciated, and there are so many people that care deeply about making sure that everybody who is able to has a, a clean, safe place to live and, and is housed in Palm Beach County. So thanks to the residents, the businesses of Palm Beach County for your support. Again, just reiterating the support for FAU, and really doing us proud, and making us very proud of, of having their efforts show off Palm Beach County, because they've put us in a really good light all across the nation, so thank them very much for their exemplary efforts and service. And then lastly, to our Muslim brothers and sisters, I just want to wish them a Ramadan Mubarak, as they celebrate the Holy Monk of Ramadan. And with that, oh, Happy Passover and a Happy Easter also coming up this week. I forgot about that. Thank you, guys. And we will be back, so we'll be in recess, we will be back at 2:00 p.m. for Matters by the Public. So here, if there's nothing else, we will be in recess till then.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. That was good.
Thank you much.